But the picking is not.
And it's like they come crazy.
That's why you have kids. Yes, I know. Yeah, well, Jack was stacking wood, you know, everybody was doing their jobs.
We have those raised garden beds, which is great because you're not hunched over and kneeling and all that. But at the same time, you're, you know, it's pretty limited, right? You can't have a massive garden.
Yeah.
So pretty limited to like four boxes.
Right.
So you get, you know.
Yes.
You get a little basket full every, every week of.
Yeah, for fresh, yeah. We can, we make dilly beans and they're tasty.
Yeah.
Hannah was telling us all about dilly beans, pickled everything.
They do a lot, yeah.
Something else to do.
Yep.
That's cool.
When Hannah Allen comes over, she and Anna will eat an entire.
Yep.
Quarter sized jar of dilly beans.
They just crush it.
Yeah.
They're like eight dollars for a little jar in Hanford.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Rebecca was them too.
Yeah, we just make them at home. They're pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, you couldn't find like bean seeds like anywhere.
Really?
Well, I had a bunch.
Yeah.
And I was getting on like Call of Italia. And I'm like, what else are they supposed to get? She said, put the beans all back. We're going to wherever this weekend with your mom. We're gonna buy, we're gonna buy it from there. I'm like, okay. I was at like Home Depot or whatever.
Yeah.
Put it back and I give it back. Again, I didn't have it. It was all sold out. So I went back and they were like, all the seed packs were gone from everywhere I've been.
Oh, no.
I was laid out, but.
Yeah.
I'm like, what the hell? So we got no beans. We had to go buy some. Just random, whatever was left and throw it, throw it in that area and see.
Make it look.
The kids tried, but they got watermelon and they got.
We tried watermelon. It didn't come at all.
They tried and I don't know if it's gonna go anywhere or not, but.
Is it like if you get a frost too early, like it kills it all?
It could, yeah. We didn't get a frost after we planted it, so I don't know why.
No, it's not much.
We didn't even, we didn't get anything.
Well, this is like, like this tall, but it's not much of anything.
Oh, well, it might grow later.
I don't know. We're still waiting on this.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll have the largest watermelon around.
You never know.
They must all be in the dirt, because certainly it's on top of the dirt.
I feel like there's something that has to be adjusted for a long reason. I can't really.
I don't know. We planted our string beans and then somehow a sun squash plant came up right in one of the rows. We didn't.
Recording in progress.
Like opposite side.
Yeah. We don't, we don't.
Oh, it goes up.
Yeah, we, we kept that in our garden like three summers in a row. Well, it grew fine, but everything just died and like. Yeah, we're just.
This year?
No, we grew up, we're done.
You guys know when to take it, because it's very quick. We don't get that. All right, uh, I knew, we knew, um.
Am I taking minutes right now because of Pato? Well.
You can help us take notes. Everybody can help take notes or whatever.
Do you have to post anything on?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're supposed to.
I can do that as well.
I didn't post the agenda either, but just chicken scratch notes.
I can do it.
We got Devon. Devon is done. Right, his term expired and so we have an open seat there. And Lindsay is just not here. She just wheeled back in from Boston. She's, she's not able to be here.
Is she trying to bow out also? Like.
What's that?
She has another position.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
I said it.
I think she is. I think she would be happy that she's, she's got a lot for her to add and outside of, outside of dress, so.
Are we trying to like fill that other seat, Devon's seat?
Yeah, we, yeah.
I can check with her. She may want to keep the skating part, but not be on the committee.
Yeah, we talk to her daily and stuff, so she. She's kind of like, I'll, I'll fill it. Tell somebody, you know, really steps up and wants to be part of it. I'll be happy to step in with her. And obviously come through the committee thing, skate stuff, but. Uh, I think we actually, to be official, we gotta call it to order and do the pledge. Uh, pledge the egypt.
To the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, founded by the principle of liberty and justice.
Oh. Yeah, I kind of last minute through an agenda. I always got 10 text messages and stuff. But I thought we'd just hit quick spring wrap up and Jake pull it up.
Yeah, um. But I gotta take myself back. Spring wrap up. I think everything's going, going like wrapped, wrapped up fairly cleanly. I think we're still trying to get the, the major boys jerseys. That's the one thing we're trying to, to pull back together. Uh, they're dropping off pool house. I can double check and see how many we got, but I don't think we have time. So that, those will be some phone calls. The.
Before we got a connection.
I, I have two right now and I think I have more.
You did.
So, um. Yes.
Well, Shimon, like you dropped a message in the group chat and we made a plan and everything.
Yeah.
It's just getting the.
Yeah.
So we have all the numbers recorded.
We got all the numbers. So it's just a matter of saying, hey, we need your jersey.
Yeah, and you know, we don't want to be the, be, you know, part of it, but we want to participate in the next one. When we fall, we need your jersey for spring.
Jersey or some sort of payment, right, to sort of compensate, I would say. Right, because I guess stuff does happen. Jerseys get ruined.
Thirty bucks a jersey.
Thirty bucks a jersey, right? Everything else, I feel like went pretty well. I mean, like the softball tournament was great. Um, it was super hot and it was super warm. That's great.
It was.
It was, it was a lot of fun. Um, I think baseball wrapped up pretty well.
I think the softball weekend was fun. I love to do that every year. I think that was a lot of fun. We had a lot of people in the park.
Yeah.
A lot of people came up with ideas for anything like kind of improved for the next year.
I think it's fun to get everybody out.
The other towns seem happy with it too.
Yeah, we had concessions going, which the second day, I thought, we actually did more in sales the second day than the first day, even though it was theoretically less towns. There, it was less towns. I think they expected it to be there and so they knew. Some people threw ideas of like way in the outfield, setting up like a big like tent, like Kiwanis style tent.
Yeah.
With tables and stuff underneath it, sell concessions right from the end of that. So people could go out between game and set tables in the shade and have concessions and. And maybe something we decided worth the money to rent a tent or even maybe somebody who were willing to donate a tent.
Steve Flippik has one, right? You don't need to go outside.
He does. Chimbor has a big one. There are a couple of big ones. There's a few around, so. I don't know. Definitely something we can plan to do a year over year. And I think the two fields right out of D is a must.
And I think, and I think we like part of the work with, I think we like, the more involved we can get in the softball league, I think we can help them do it better. Because it seems like the people that are doing it are sort of grass and not straws because they don't really want to be, they don't have connections to it. They're just doing it to keep it alive.
Yeah.
But maybe, yeah, so, yeah.
It sounds like a volunteer to take lead on the league.
Uh, no. Uh, but, but I think the wrap up on, uh, baseball season, the wrap up, we got, we got a championship. Major's Boys made it second round, playoffs. Um, T-ball wrapped up without any, I mean, we hit, we hit that schedule pretty well. I wasn't there for the wrapped up. I started handing out ice cream.
Yeah.
That went quick.
And Coach Pitch crushed it.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, both, the boys and the girls, Coach Pitch was, sounded like it was a pretty good, good time.
I did, yeah, and I think that's another thing like our, it's our Coach Pitch Boys, I think it seems like our, like. We had a consistent team and everybody else was just scrambling to try and show up. Um, which, yeah, which, you know, like. Was a good thing, but also sort of frustrating, I think, for Terry, right?
Yeah.
Hey, we've canceled four meetings here, you know, um, and he's got like eighteen boys ready to play. Um, I think that would be like fore looking like.
Really, it's something like seven, three, four softball, baseball championship, five, six, seven, upset win, right? To get that round, which was cool. Softball, the four through six softball, girls both made it to.
Third quarter.
Semi finals.
Yeah.
The. Yeah, both made it to the semi finals, right, which was cool.
And yeah, one, one hit in a different direction and like they're both in the final game.
Yes, same. Yeah, that was, that was fun. That was good. Um. Not, so I think softball is a really good fit. The league we're in, I think they had plenty of teams. Obviously the commutes are a little far for a couple of the games, which, but not too bad. Baseball, I'm torn about what to do with baseball.
Baseball's.
Because it's not a good fit for baseball.
It wasn't a good fit for three, four. It was a great fit for five, six.
That's true.
Right?
That's tough.
Uh, I think five, six was right for them, right? Like competition wise.
And I think, I think five, six is a tough group too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so next year it's gonna be totally different.
It's gonna be totally different. I mean, I think three, four. They'll still be talented.
Right.
I think they might challenge, be struggling with numbers, but they'll still be talented.
Right.
And the Coach Pitch Boys, I think, had a lot.
They need to grow coming up. Right.
So I think, I think we have at least four feelers out there for some other towns. Fairfield team really want us to like, we'd love to have more. Yeah.
Um, actually, Shimon, we have three sixth graders.
Yeah, they're all sixth graders.
So there were like fourteen fifth graders.
Which maybe we have two five six things actually.
Yeah, and we're not losing a lot of the, the older talent, so we, you know, should do it. We'll be more competitive.
Yeah.
We didn't have no one in our next sixth grade class, so. So anyway, I'll, I mean, Jake, when I work, I've obviously got the contacts in Waterville and Fairfield and stuff, so again, don't see those again.
I mean, that's gonna be better baseball, right?
It, it is. I know we got out of that a while ago and it's one of those, if we can commit to at least two or three years of trying it, it's probably well worth it. And I think, I mean, our three, four team played there, Fairfield All-Star team. And it was hard. We brought four to one in a fourth inning or a fifth inning. Remember, it was very competitive. So I think, yeah, they had five teams.
Right.
That they pulled that off right from, so I think the individual teams would have been very comparable to.
Where we're at.
Where we're at, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we kind of, we gotta play, because I think that would be, you know. Got to feel it out as far as traveling.
Yeah. So I think the big two takeaways, look at that, um, and you got a little bit of equipment, it's kind of stored away for the winter.
Yeah, we're missing a bunch of bats.
Yeah, that's what happened.
We have currently be, I know Shimon's got a couple that he's using, but maybe we've got three stand bats currently on the shelf. Um, Cody May have a couple that he's using for the stuff over down the half farm on Tuesdays, but.
From baseball or?
From baseball, and I think we're missing a bucket of balls.
Then you ask Shimon.
Shimon, I got Shimon's. I think it's Steve's bucket of balls. I don't know.
Look, Steve's bucket of balls, I'll check with him, but by.
It would have been right in that shed.
By late in the season, there should only be one bucket every night shed.
Yeah.
And so I don't, I felt we have a probably a bucket like mid-season somewhere.
Because we have a bunch of the like the soft, like the level threes.
Yeah.
Squishy ones. That's the level five ones we really like.
The real balls.
So yeah, equipment is just kind of, uh, and I think there is.
Catching gear is all good. Catching gear is good, which is the most important piece, but baseball's a five bucks a buck, so. They, you know, to get three dozen, four dozen in a bucket down the fold.
Yeah.
So you drop a few there almost.
Right, we're expecting enough to.
Bats, I, I like, I don't know about the other sports. We could almost not supply bats and we find every kid on the team almost has their own bats anyway. You know, I don't, we're the one who'll spend a couple hundred dollars a bat and buy ten new bats.
I think if we have, yeah, two to three bats in a bag for the kids that can't afford.
And most of them always kind of borrow it. They kind of use yours, kind of use yours. They all trade, use each other's and. But if we can throw a couple in, but it, by the end of the season, in season's back, and I don't pack it up every time, right? And I have like two bats at the end of season.
Yeah, I think Coach Pitch, I don't know if there are any bats for the Coach Pitch team that came back.
I was just gonna ask if you'd be shut to Terry at all.
Yeah, and I, I don't think, there's no tracking those down, but I could do.
They're not numbered. They're not, we had how many, like even like, I was at almost every one of Steve's practices and we always put them away. And we started with, I know, five and ended up with like two and a random one that we didn't start with.
Yeah.
And so I don't know what now, how we want that.
And I think it's, I think maybe what we do is we mark them going into next season, like we just write on them. Somehow maybe put a stamp on them so we know.
We got an engraver. We can engrave on the top.
It'd be sweet, you know?
Or we try to don't issue them and say we have some reserve. If you find you have, you need any.
Just like. Yeah.
So, yeah, okay. Seems like a good idea. All right, uh, summer, do you want to just roll that in the summer?
Summer's kind of on cruise control, I think, um. So we're running, we didn't run, run it in summer camp this summer, but we did a field hockey camp. We did a soccer camp. Um, soccer camp kind of fell flat. I mean, I think we probably had eight or nine kids. Uh, we, like the coach from Thomas College came to do it. The price point was up. It was always that, also that week of Fourth of July, which I think all those things would have contributed to it being. Less like, just exciting and put together. Field hockey camp, I think, went really well. Uh, like there's a great turnout of girls. There's often there's a bunch of high school, like Terry didn't have a bunch of high school kids down there. Um. Yeah, I think the field hockey camp was like a great, kind of modeling.
I love that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, uh, I think the field hockey camp went really well. Um, the summer programs, we've got Skylene doing, uh, basketball and soccer. Brady Rogers helped him with soccer because there's a lot more kids there. Brady's doing tennis. So the two of them are kind of running the sports. Uh, they're doing, they're doing a great job. Skylar's great with the kids. Um, Brady's soft spoken, but he's like really warm with the kids. He's always like, they're just doing really well. I'm really excited about them. Hallie's doing arts and crafts. Uh, Hunter Gamble's helping her. Um, I'm over there every day checking in. Hallie's like, I, well, she's very regimented with her, like this is the craft we're doing today. She's, I have them send me their plans for the week on Sunday night so I can see what they're anticipating doing. Um, and she's like, I could not think of the crafts to do every day. If you asked me to do that, I would like melt. Like, there's just no way. I'm like, what's your craft? She's got a different craft from every day, which is.
Who is it?
Hallie Williams.
Hallie.
She did it last year.
Jen's.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, she did it last year.
Haley, okay.
Oh, yeah, Haley.
I think it's Hallie.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I expected it was Haley.
But it's pronounced Hallie, yeah.
Good, good to know. I couldn't tell if they were saying Hadley or Hallie and I'm like. All right, Hallie.
So she, they're, they're doing a really good job. Um, there's a lot more kids signed up for arts and crafts. I think last year we were on twenty. This year there's like thirty seven. Um, and we've got a lot of like, we're always like paving masons in park, so we're kind of like, we, and they were waxing the floors. The first week we were in the hallway, then we're in the gym. Next week we're gonna be outside. So we're just kind of getting, moving around, but I think that's just the nature of the beast. Um, yeah, I don't think there's anything else we can do about, unless we have a community center, right, like to make that work. Uh. The pool is going, I mean, we're, we're open. We haven't really, I mean, there's a thunderstorm that caused about, there's a thunderstorm and a throw up incident that causes the coast, but that was only for like, like one shift. Um, and we're able to get back on it. Uh, Ethan's doing a great job. Swim lessons, like this time is like session two is packed. I think like ninety kids signed up for swim lessons, uh, which is awesome. Uh, it's also like the very like peak of our capacity, I think, as far as what we can do with the guards. Um, I think we're pretty fortunate that we've got a full staff of lifeguards. Looking at like places like Bangor and stuff like that, they're closing their pools and their pools aren't open because they can't find the lifeguards to do what they need to do. Um. So I, I mean, I think, I think everything is kind of, Ethan, I like, Ethan's doing a great job. Like I check in with him in the morning and how's it going, right? He's putting together schedules and those sorts of things. He's been super on it, but, um. Knows, knows the things to make a big deal out of that, essentially, so. Um, I'm really happy with like how well he's kind of working that role. And he's hoping, I talked to him about it yesterday, kind of floated it, and he's planning to do it again next year, which is awesome, yeah.
Did you get any, um, junior lifeguard?
We've got, yeah, we're gonna run a junior lifeguard program this session. So we've got three kids, which is awesome. And I think that's part of the reason we're not struggling for lifeguards is because that junior lifeguard piece is in place to kind of sort of prep them for becoming a lifeguard. I look, I think of the five that we have, all five was, were a junior lifeguard at one point, so whoever's ideal was to get the junior lifeguard piece in there, right, knew what they were doing, yeah. That's, that's what's your goal for. Um, I think numbers are up. Like I was looking at the numbers between, um, last summer and what we've got this summer. I think no, just like with baseball, I think numbers are up and everything. Uh, which is awesome. It means people are getting out and playing. I think part of it is the ease of registration to people, being able to, to go online and just like. Find the information they need and, and register, so. Um, and then also coming out of COVID and stuff, I think that too, and that kind of helps.
Like I saw that in the field hockey clinic, but Dennis is running, and I'm saying, hey, I know we were doing that, and I got about it, but I got the email, like, yeah, cool.
Yeah.
Hallie, did you see this? She's like, yeah, I already signed her up.
Yeah, just sent me the text this afternoon, actually.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and that's a sort of, that's sort of prep. I think field hockey, they, part of the benefit of the field hockey camp is able to work with, right, work with them on thinking about like, how do we. Run our field hockey program in the fall, right? So you're able to talk about that throughout the week. Um, and part of it is Teresa wants to run like some clinics, try and boost some numbers and do two different levels. So we've got three through six. And K through, um, two as like separate groups so that we can play some games with three through six, find some games for the younger kids too. Um, we'll see how that goes. I'm gonna meet with her and Melissa Stinson, who did it last year, next Monday, and we're gonna kind of go through like our plan for the fall.
I don't know Teresa at all, but my dad's been super happy.
She, like, she's coaching the middle school girls. I didn't, I never met her until this past week, but she's.
She's super happy, yes.
Yeah.
So I have a question though. I think in the past, it was only up to fifth grade because sixth graders play at Warsaw.
So we got to figure that out too. Um, I think we go with whatever, I mean, Teresa's coaching the girls.
Right. Well, if you need the numbers, it'd be good to include sixth graders.
Yeah.
Because the field hockey program in the past has, really hasn't had enough older girls to play games.
To play games.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know if you remember that from last year, but we kind of threw together an eight on eight game and that was.
Yeah, I think staying connected with Justin too, on. Only six graders are gonna be involved in the middle school sports versus what sports they're not involved in.
I'm not sure how that should.
And if it's really set, so I wonder if it's, hey, we don't have enough, let's call up a few sixth graders.
Um, they try their best to stick to the ages that Warsaw. Expects because some of the other schools, like I know Dover does fit through a former softball and baseball teams. But we only do seventh to eighth. So. The league itself, I think, is a middle school league, but Warsaw chooses to do certain things.
Yeah.
I think it is to help support the rec program.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's one of those where. Like what, it maybe have to be fluid, because we hate to have like take football, right?
Yeah.
Football's seven, they go like, they're already down to eight man.
Right.
And talking to Ben and Jeremy, they're concerned about even enough for eight man.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year it was.
So if, as much as it would stink if we have to talk to Justin and take some sixth graders out of rec and play up to second, seventh, eighth, which is what we all drove in, right?
Which is what, and it's what we do for basketball.
If we have to do that. And but in all, it's a permanent thing now. Like we look at it season by season for some of those things. Trying to be seven, eight, because you don't want to take it away from rec, but also if you miss a football season.
Yeah.
Or a softer season or softball season.
Yeah.
That's devastating to the.
I think, yeah, I don't think that he would cancel a season because of age. He did talk last year about moving sixth grade, well, fifth grade up to play field hockey. If they didn't get enough numbers.
Yeah.
Um, I know that was kind of on the, they talked about it.
Yeah.
Um. One of the things I can speak to football is sixth graders are really little compared to eighth graders. And I like.
So, yeah.
Well, Jack is a big boy.
Yeah.
And he was very little even compared to eighth graders. Uh, because the boys get big. They have growth spurts like crazy when they're in upper middle school.
Yeah.
So I do know some of it's a safety thing.
And some, some of that, right, and play football, right, you gotta rely on the coaches, know where to put them in and not put them in certain situations.
Right.
Right? And we're a small town, like, uh, when we grew up through, it was a six, seven, eight football team. That's what it was growing up through. It was, you only get to play rec until fifth grade. There was no sixth grade rec for football. It was tackle all the way through.
Right.
And the same happens with freshmen and seniors and M G I, right? You just kind of, you have to rely on the coaches to know.
Yeah.
To keep out of the situation. Um. Well, I guess my point was the flip side, like say basketball, right?
Mm-hmm.
That as much as we can keeps five, six to five, six basketball and don't call up sixth graders to seven, eight unless you need the numbers to fill out a team.
Right.
And I need to see a bunch of the sixth graders making the seven, eight team and seven, eighth graders playing the B team because sixth graders made eighteen or.
Sixth graders traditionally.
Sixth graders playing up to play on a B team or something like that. I hope that happens, but.
It does. It's.
They should.
Basketball is six, seven, eight.
It is.
Open to sixth graders.
Well, I was not.
You have to try out though.
Sixth graders have to try out them, right?
They have to master try out.
So like, we'll, we'll cut eighth graders, right? Right, we haven't cut anybody in the last two years. Um, yeah, and I mean, we're fielding twelve man teams, right? So and that's, that's with sixth graders. So it's, we was, I think there would be a struggle to have teams at all without the sixth graders. Well, there would be no B team, uh, which some of these towns, that's what.
Cut, what are the, just remind, just for the, what are the, what are the teams again? We're getting away from track, I know.
It's all good. We got a.
Is it, is it a seven, eight boys?
No, we have an A and a B, right? Seven, and traditionally seven, eight can try out for A, sixth grade can try out for B.
Okay, gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so sixth graders don't play in the eighteen.
Not until this last year, in which case, yeah, this last year was a little funky, but traditionally no. So the eight.
They may try out for the eighteen, they don't make it, they go to the B. And sixth graders can try out for the B.
And the sixth graders try.
If they don't make it, they play rec.
I think.
Well, my tenth, I.
Go back to A.
They play both.
Right.
That's what happens. They play both.
We had two eighteen girls play rec last year.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Eighteen girls, pretty poor, but, right?
All right. So summer's going pretty well. Sorry, I got to split after I.
It's all good.
Summer's going pretty well.
Summer's going, I think it's going well based, like, it's going well, staff's great, right? Uh, the kids involved are great. Compare, I can't compare to anything like past, past years, right?
But I know. Numbers wise to like a soccer camp or things like that that are, have a challenging numbers. Do you think it's just timing of the year? Is it communication? Is it time of the day?
I think it was just time, timing.
It was a new program. Sorry, it's a new program. No one really.
What's new?
Yeah.
What was new?
The soccer camp.
Oh, the soccer camp.
Um, I think, so I think part of.
Then there was a cost. It was sixty two dollars.
Yeah. Because it was Thomas College was helping us with it and they were coming down, so, um.
Do all towns do their camp stuff and things like that during the day in the summer? I'm assuming they do.
Um, so I was looking at Farmington rec program, right? And it's, it looks almost like ours except turned up, um, as far as what they have to offer. Yeah.
One thing.
Day program.
One thing maybe a recommendation would be in talking to the schools about that enrichment program.
Yeah.
And like I know the field hockey camp, what was that, like the All-American field hockey camp or something?
Right.
Was at the same time as the enrichment programs. So like Molly could only do enrichment, which she loved, but, you know, it was.
Pick one.
And right, in the future, and I don't think that was run through rec, but.
No.
For ideas, you know, camps like that, try to stagger those.
And that's been like Sarah Ross mentioned to me, because she does the summer school stuff about trying to get, like working with the summer school stuff, right? Working around that, which I really didn't have much of a vision for this year, but I think in the future, trying to.
That's good.
Trying to move around, right? Like have our programming not happening while the summer school stuff is happening, right? So I just encourage. A lot of those kids are doing summer school also, rec stuff.
That's good.
Which are mean afternoon stuff instead of morning stuff, really, is what I mean, but, yeah.
It did, um, every year after that, we're gonna get, every season we'll get a few, and it has a little more and a little more, right? This will be at least our groups, third go around with football, third go around with basketball. And stuff every year, kind of second time through, yeah, some of these things, so it'll be good. I did, I did some outreach, just to some of my buddies in different towns that have rec stuff going on.
Yeah.
And just for our fees conversation later, but they said a bunch of them actually use MyRec and just sent me the link to their MyRec pages, so they had some cool ideas for how they set theirs up.
Cool. Cool.
But they have some really interesting offerings that they do through their rec. That people do, they have like adventure hiking things and there's just tons of obscure.
Well, and that's.
Offerings that I think as we get more things underneath our belt and getting on the handle on.
Yep.
We can do some, we have different, not in biking or hiking or.
We're even to set them up in like a camp format, right, like we're in this, this is what, this week's adventure week, right, and sign up for adventure week. Like we're talking to Mike Levy about it, it's like certified teach community, like not biking, we could do all, yeah, um, I think that could be really cool.
Yeah, so I'll share, I'll share that with you, the, the way to just, yeah. Sort of share with them or just the ideas of the towns.
Pretty cool stuff. I think there's a lot we can do.
Yeah.
Right, that isn't just like, it's not, it's not just like traditional sports, right, you can get them out there. Cause arts and crafts are going up and that's like forty kids.
Yeah.
Um. So it shows that there's an, an interest.
Yep, in those hiking or fishing or it's something, it's whatever.
I guess as a, I was gonna say, as a mom, I, I am flexible, my work is flexible, but I am basically driving back and forth like. Up, you know, every day all morning, so there's no, I, I can't work while I'm taking my kids stuff. So I'm, I'm not complaining, right? Cause I signed my kids up, but I think a lot of people, like your kids can't do, you're not, your kids aren't doing more than you. Cause you can't get them.
Yeah, a couple of campers who have to work some carpools and stuff, I would.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering how, how to get kids. I know there's at like Waterville and Oakland, they do like full day or half day things, I don't know if we can ever get to that point where we can do more of a. Like I said, I'm driving to Manson Park. I, and again, I'm not complaining, it's a five minute drive, I used to drive forty-five minutes, but you know, four, four to six times a day. And most people can't do that.
Look at how you might go to structure like consecutive activities.
Yeah.
So they could sound over half day block.
Right, yeah.
Or something like that.
Well, I think that's like, and a lot of, like a lot of the older kids, they're, they're just shot up on their bike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and that's, you know, um, so it's, I guess, it's the same thing, and it's just like, go for it. Uh, where people are coming to like a lot of, they'll go to swim and then they go to arts and crafts.
Yeah.
And it's like.
Yeah, but they can't do arts and crafts by themselves, the kids can't do arts and crafts by themselves, they have to be with an adult.
Okay. So a lot of good ideas, obviously, probably like we've got to talk more about, we got some time for planning the next time, so that's good. Uh, next thing my head on here was jumping into the photo contracts. Not contract, no, but non-contract contract.
Well, just like, yeah, seeing who's got photography packages, and it's the package you're gonna go with for the year. Right, and then revisiting it again next summer.
Yep, so. It's a matter of just opening that up and. Catherine, that may be something you could give some guidance on. We wanna, um, Aaron McKeon has kind of done the photography for rec for years.
He's not done, he's interested, he'll put in a bid.
No, he has done, he has done.
He's done photography for years, um, and at least one of the photography person from Look Town has a pressing interest. And wondering how, you know, how do they get a foot in the door, so we want to put up kind of for R F P kind of thing.
Alright, so you've been running that separately, you know, off to the side, so if you.
Yeah, just looking for a nice.
A recreation function, then we need to put together a little bid package. Um, and if it's small, um, it can just be approved internally, if it's gonna be a lot, a lot of money. Um, and I don't think it would be over seven thousand five hundred, it's gonna be a lot smaller. If it's over seven thousand five hundred, it goes to the council, but we would put out a little bid package to anybody that's interested. As well as put a legal ad in the paper so people will know, advertise it on Facebook page, have a due date. And then the committee gets together and looks over the proposals and picks one.
Yeah, and because like we don't pay anything, we don't sign it, it's just somebody that takes the photographs and it's individuals. Sign up and have them done.
Yeah, they have the right to. Sell their photographs to the, to the parents.
Yeah, so that was kind of the different dynamic there, so just kind of when I, R F P, put up an R F P to solicit bids and.
They would, like, cause it's gonna be different than a traditional bid, right, you're not gonna put a dollar amount.
It's, it's request for proposal.
Right.
Instead of a.
And a specific price, we can figure out, I guess what I'm trying to figure is like, what are the ones that we include in the proposal?
I think some of the things we want, if, that we have discussed in the future, we're being able to order online and being able to have things mailed directly instead of. I don't know personally, being able to order them online is great, being able to have them if like. Either delivered digitally or mailed directly to the home.
Yeah.
Or, which, I mean, half the time, ninety-nine percent of the time it's fine, but there's that handful of times that I get sent home to your kid and shut them in the locker and you get them the next year all crumpled up. That's not great.
If you're going up for like a proposal, like presentation.
Yeah.
You, you try to stay kind of. Vague-ish, just, you get like, we're inviting you to commit for a proposal on what you can offer for services. And a resume of your.
What you got.
You know, some samples of your work and present to, to the group and then we kind of say, you know, where to award the. Contract or the agreement or number two, X, Y, Z.
Cool.
So I think we got, probably jump on that pretty soon.
Yeah, we got.
We have to schedule, we'd actually probably have, want to have a meeting where they come in and kind of show, is that what they can do, I would, that's what I. That's what I do.
Yeah.
So we can ask questions and things too. Does that make sense?
We schedule a time for each specific person to come in?
Require a response and give them a time, yeah.
Yeah, so that if there's three and you wanted to meet with three, you would set a time for a little bit of time in between so they really wouldn't meet each other.
Right.
Yeah.
Kind of good interview.
Yeah, does, is Aaron know we're doing this yet?
Oh, yeah, we talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that, then alright.
One way, I'm great.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, he was actually very relaxed about it.
I can, I can work on the invitation to proposal, I get a bunch of, I just take construction one and we get.
Both of you.
Yeah. And I'll just shoot from that, I'll just group to establish what we want for a time and a date and a deadline to do that. We give them, should be able to give them a few weeks to run them, should be.
Yeah, I think we want to have it buttoned up period on September first.
Oh, at the, yeah, at the.
So they're meeting for like meeting.
Me, me, yeah, in late August, in late August, in late, it's actually. Alright. So I can do that. Um, Athlon Park, it's, the pricing for Athlon Park field. Rejuvenation, uh, obviously as we have everything, inflation hit everything hard, so I communicated to you guys that we're not going to put four grand. Um, to replace the infield. The scope of that is they go basically from dugout to dugout, behind the plate, six feet perimeter around the whole infield, they cut everything out. They haul it all out, they bring in new, I don't know if you've seen infield at Manson Park, it's, it's, you know, it's the special infield there that doesn't grow shit. And bring in sawed, they re-sawed all the field, they rebuilt the mound, they rebuilt home plate, they rebuilt. That coaches boxes, walk, pass, banner circles, they rebuild all that stuff. And it's all rebuilt, takes out all the lips, the humps, the valleys, the, and all that stuff, so that's something, that's what they had done at Manson. We priced it out to do it at the same time, we have budget, more funding to do it, so we had to put it off a year, obviously pricing went up. Um, but we do have the majority of the budget in the budget. I need to go another year and I don't know if you or Dennis Bill can afford it, they can skip southfield infield to the mouth.
Hey, you had his hand there.
Oh, yeah, chipped his tooth, chipped his tooth on those lip, or Emmett Sally took one right between the eyes off the lip on the edge of the infield.
We've had a rough baseball, so we had stitches.
Yeah, stitches, stitches.
Aw, man.
He, he lost a fly ball at, at camp, two hours into it and split his leg.
Oh, no.
Was it ten, ten stitches?
I guess, I, I believe, but. I left him with my husband, not just left.
So the question is Catherine, how can we go about this?
So the price that we had originally was seven thousand seven hundred or around that. So we carry forward four thousand dollars from last year's budget and put three thousand seven hundred in, so you already have seven thousand seven hundred. You need four thousand five hundred and fifty and your budget is way under, uh, in terms of expenditure, so there's plenty of money in the budget to take care of the rest of this. Because it is over seven thousand five hundred, uh, we need to raise, uh, the bid process because you don't have other bids. But we are gonna have to know, did you talk to other companies, is this the only one that can do this?
Yeah, a reason for sole sourcing, yeah.
Yeah, why is it this one, and it will have to have an agenda either at the council meeting.
Okay.
It's above what I can approve, which is seven thousand five hundred.
Okay.
It's pretty easy to do.
Yep, yeah, and the sports fields in Maine is kind of like the staple for, a lot of guys can do it, these guys just, we, we have a relationship here in town, we see the work. It's better than the schedule and stuff, so, um, and I'll talk to, to Paul about who else he's engaged with, cause Paul really started the solicitation of bids at the, so. Will be able to help us with some of that.
So we want to get that at the council meeting, like.
Yeah, I get it, on the council meeting, I've got him, I've got him penciled in, have September, first week of September, he said that's the ideal date to do it. And have it not burn out, but also not freeze before it's rooted, so if we can get it all passed through and get a P O number for them, it'll be good to go. Um. Totally kind of just bullshit, I, I did call a guy, a couple of guys at landscaping company. Cause I, during softball weekend, I saw the irrigation system down at the park at Manson going, and I was like, oh, man.
Looks great.
That's part of the reason this looks so beautiful, it's held up so well. And with the new saw coming, I spelled in twelve grand on sawed, and it says it needs what, one to two inches of soaked water daily for the first three weeks. That's a lot to put on either the rec director or the public works to come over and move sprinklers around all day, every day and have it die if you don't stand on top of it. So I said, if it's all cut out, the saw is all gone, it's right down in dirt anyway, wouldn't it be a good time to lay a couple of lines in, a couple of sprinkler heads? If we could make it work. Um, so a couple of guys said, you know, we'll be in the ballpark, it'll probably be in the ballpark of two to three grand if we didn't have to redo any seed. Or sawed or anything, if we had to fill it back in and put sawed in or water and seed, trench signs, it would be, you know, four or five grand.
So would the, the sprinklers like come up by?
The pressure from the water line pushes the sprinkler head up and the timer tells it when to turn on, when to turn off.
See.
Um. There'd have to be a lot more scope figured out and it would probably kind of have to find a fundraising, likely fundraising money if we want to get out of there. We'd have to talk to, to the water department because they would have a scope of work to be able to tie in to the, to the main right there, so. Um, I'll wait till I get the information back, I met the guy from, I talked to a guy from Black Bear, Bangor, and I met the guy from. I get it written down, Turner Landscaping. They're in like Freeport, thought they'd work up here all the time.
Yeah.
And he was actually, he was driving through, so he said, hey, can I pull in and look at it?
Yeah.
And he thought it was a, kind of a baby little job for him, so.
Cause they, and I just all ripped up already.
It's all torn up, it's literally just.
Two hours.
Trenchy, a couple, a couple of pipes in the ground and putting sprinkler heads in and all that. It's mostly to do with the, the programming and getting public works to tie in, which would be the bigger deal, so. Anyway, does that, should I get public phone or getting pricing and at least what it would take on scope from public works?
Yeah, it sounds like we need to educate ourselves and.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
But you need to do it before September, or?
Yeah, we, we need to have it all figured out before they did the, the field, yeah, and did the base thing.
You want to do it at the same time, it should save money.
Yeah, and this one I did reach out to four or five companies and three of them called me back, two of them actually talked to and stuff, so.
That's pretty typical.
Yeah, so, um. Anyway, I'll get more information to let you know, I don't want to focus too much on one field, but it is one of the few actual parks that we are responsible for maintaining.
Right. Should we put it on one of the town council agendas, like?
Get it in for the same.
Get it in, yeah, cause if it's gonna happen September first, there's only two more.
Well, it's.
Till then.
There's under seven five hundred, that's something within your ability, right?
Yes, if the, if the irrigation is gonna be two thousand, that's fine, um, I can take care of that.
Yeah, right, and he was shooting from the hip and I was looking at it, but he said it was a small, and we do like infield only, cause the outfield is being replaced and. It's really burned up.
Yeah, like we have to, they, they'd have to be able to work their schedule into sports field schedule, right?
Yeah, yeah, and they, I told them roughly when that was.
Yeah.
And so, alright, I'll, uh, I'll follow back up with the batch on that.
Did you already put an agenda item in for the actual approval of the Hathorn piece?
No, we were finding out from Catherine tonight what the process would end up like, so I'll get the reason for sole sourcing.
Yeah.
Written up and then, um, we have the pricing and put that together to get on the, on the agenda meeting on the council.
Yeah, we have two meetings, so you go outside.
Okay, good. Okay. Um. Other like maintenance type things, we did share the list of capital projects, it wasn't really a capital projects plan. And Catherine replied with some guidelines of what we need to do. I don't know if you have the ability Catherine to point in the direction of some of these grants or. You, whenever I want to write something like that up, I like to know what the grant is for so you can kind of. Word your application letter appropriately.
So basically, I'm gonna have to have some details about the items that you're interested in, we have one, um, bureau of parks and. Recreation grants, that the town receives seven of those, um, and worked on all the parks over the years, starting in like two thousand and four up. And then, um, we were told we had enough grants and needed to wait a while, so the other towns can have them. So, you know, it's time now, we can apply again, the grants, uh, go from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand, you can have a smaller one, but because of all the paperwork and everything. You'll want to put a number of items together, so if you wanted to completely redo a park, that would be the way to do it. Instead of running around to five different parks and figuring out something you need.
So pull together a few of the related initiatives, kind of projects we listed, we would want to put, like, we have a bunch of maintenance things, but that's not what we want to grant them in for, it's. Small maintenance type things, we want to put it in for.
Capital.
Lighting projects and bleacher and this and that, okay?
Because everything was, you know, sparkly new at one point, but it's now, you know, maintenance wise, it's issues.
We talked about playground equipment and there's no, there's no A D A playground equipment down there, things like that, I'm sure there must be. A D A playground equipment grants and stuff like that out there right now.
Uh, we would have to go through the parks and recreation grants.
That would be a safe.
Yeah, we were fortunate, I just do not believe how much that playground equipment costs.
It's crazy.
We've done a huge grant for that, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To put everything in, so at that time, it was okay the way it was done, but yes, we did need A D A.
Yeah, there is one off for A D A type piece of equipment down there, something.
At Hathorn?
Yeah, there is, I don't think there's any, right?
I don't know, it's pretty new equipment that's there, but I don't know what. Um, I don't know if it makes approval.
The only reason I thought of this is cause I was just looking on a parks equipment website, and I see playground, I'm like, well, I'll click on it. And I had a whole category of A D A.
Yeah.
Equipment, and stuff I never, you know, for wheelchair to lock ready to swing.
Anything A D that, A D A there, it's just a regular swing set, like climbing wall or a regular.
Yeah.
A D A like wheelchair locks into a swing kind of thing, swings or there's, I don't know. But it seemed like, uh, I'm sure there'd be, that'd be a pretty.
Right.
Easy one to get approved for grant money if you apply for it, but. Anyway, okay, so maybe that's a, maybe that's a side committee to kind of look at those projects and one would be the priority to put together and stuff.
So for other items, if you have just separate items, there's one item in this park and four in this park or two in this park and they're all different. If we have a little description, then we can look for separate grants. And what I'm thinking of is the banks often will have different categories of funding, like this year it will be recreation, next year it will be, you know, cancer. Uh, prevention, there'll be a whole list of items for the banks and the different charitable foundations, so. If we know what, a little bit of background on these items, we can look through those over the years.
Okay.
And see what we can come up with.
Alright, yeah, we can write a description, um, if we need. Um. Supplying equipment, a big one there being soccer goals. Jake did a bunch of research, found a bunch of goal options.
Yeah.
Um, they're in that thirty-five hundred to.
Yep.
Six thousand range.
Oh, we could spend.
Probably spent a ton on that too.
Uh, I think, I mean, we looked at a few of them, I think we can get from whites, did you look at that link?
I, I looked at it a little quick, right, not knowing anything about soccer, it looks like a goal.
It looks like a goal, it's not fancy, but it does the job, um, I think it would, yeah, I think it, I think it would be a good.
Do you know what it's made of? Only because, uh.
Aluminum.
Um, I don't.
Yeah.
They are also to be welded aluminum.
Welded aluminum, right, and then there's a coating around it, that rust, rust is what I was worried about, cause it would be out there all day.
Yeah.
Uh, it's got the wheels on, so we can move it.
Got the two, yeah, two back wheels.
Yeah.
That's.
I did talk to Paul.
The one I was looking at was, it was a full wheel and it were leather controlled, so they're, they're on the ground, but.
They're on a motor.
You click the leather down and it pops the wheels.
Oh, that's cool.
So you kind of wheel the whole thing, but I think, I have a thousand bucks for the wheel kit, so.
Yeah, 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 uh, so I think, I mean, I think we could, there is like, with you in the soccer account, I think there is still three hundred dollars. Um, so.
We order balls by chance?
We haven't ordered balls yet, oh.
So I'd say we need a complete overhaul with balls.
Dump them all and get new ones.
Yep, I think so. And also. Well, yeah.
Say what?
Oh, camera balls.
A count of balls.
Yeah.
Ask.
How many?
So what's our idea, like, do we want to, as a coach, it's nice for every player to have a ball?
Right.
So it's.
I know.
We have like ninety kids last year or something, maybe eighty kids.
I don't know, I don't know actually.
Well, it doesn't have to be long, yeah, I guess. Cause, oh, different sizes.
Oh, they're, they're the sizes too.
The younger ones have.
Threes.
Just like basketballs, different sizes.
Yeah. Yeah, what is it, K-two, K-two has small balls.
Three, that's three, yeah.
And then, three, four, and five, six, both use the bigger ones.
Yeah.
Which are what size?
John thinks it's size five. I think it's size four, but.
I think it's a regular, it's always been, I think, a regular.
Is there anything about the league, like where the league say what's.
What size balls league?
Can I, I, I don't, so what league were we in last year? And do you guys know who we talked to, like, who the contact is for that?
I don't know who the contact is.
John would know.
But we played like Corinna, Dexter. I think it's a similar league to what the girls softball played in.
The tennis league.
Yeah.
I just gotta figure out who I need to call.
I wonder if Jane Crockett.
You can always start with Jean if you're really selective.
That's right, I'll call Jean. My partner, that would help too.
Yeah, they might, yeah.
Yeah, good call.
Right, so I would say at least twenty balls per team. I think that's the minimum.
So we have two travel teams?
Depending on the year, so. For the little kiddos, there's, sometimes there's like thirty kids.
Uh, I'll say twelve to fifteen on a team.
No.
Gotcha.
There wasn't for us.
K-one-two, I think it was thirty kids last year.
Yeah.
On one team?
For the little kids.
It's like, it's like a T-ball.
Oh, oh, we just gotta split up and play each other kind of thing?
Right.
Though, we have a lot of those balls, are those balls all bad too?
They're all.
They are?
Bad.
There were no new balls last year.
We had to pump, when I coached out, we had to pump them up every single practice.
Alright, so we would be, like, I'm just trying to, so two teams, twenty balls a team, cause we had two teams last year, right?
No, you had one, three.
One, three, four, and one, five, six.
Two teams, right, and then we had the little kids. Right, so we're talking forty plus thirty, seventy balls.
Right.
Seems like a lot of soccer balls.
Do you think that's enough Sarah, twenty per team? Is that too much?
I, I would do like fifteen.
Does every kid really need their own ball for dribbling exercises?
Yeah, you could, I can see that.
Yeah, let's do it, but, yeah, how much a ball would be, how much each, we're gonna, I'm trying to.
Could be twenty.
We should definitely look at the balls then and make, like, not keep trash, but if there's some that is cracked up, but they could be a bottom of the bag backup ball or something, like keep a bag of.
We were basically using MCI balls, um, for a lot of the five, six practices, just cause John had them, but he was like scrambling for balls.
Oh, that's, that's another question. With the shed at Manson Park, is there an ability for teams to share any balls?
It's definitely game days.
You don't have, you need a ball per kid on game days, right?
But, yeah, yeah, good. So if we did, so if we did every, like, all our soccer stuff down in that, like, little corner of the park, shed's loaded with soccer balls. Peewee's gonna play a different time, like.
Shoot it, shoot it down, which kind of thing.
As long as we all practice at Manson, you get sometimes practice at worst.
Back and forth between Mark Saw and Manson.
So I think if we put the goals in, we put the shed with the balls there, that's our spot.
Right, you just have to work around MCI in the practice field.
MCI will be down at High School. That's, that's part of the reason we're getting the goals, is cause everybody. So that field would be us, and we have two fields there, cause we have the three, four field, right, that we just set up with Brother Tennis Courts. And then it would be the big one with the full size eight by twenty-four soccer goals. So I think we could do everything like right there.
Lindsay, correct me if I'm wrong, was she wondering if we needed full-size goals for the fifth, sixth graders?
We do, yeah.
What size did you say? You don't mean small, twenty-four?
No, we don't, but we need full-size ones for fifth, sixth graders.
Well, at least that was.
We have ones for the third, fourth graders.
Right, gotcha.
Yeah, we got the little ones, and those are good to go. It's the big ones that, and I think part of that isn't just, it's not just our soccer program, but like, summertime we use those goals, right? People are going down to the park, playing soccer together, they're using those goals, I think it just sort of adds to the park, um, having them there, right? So I don't think it's beyond just the program itself, but also like, part of Manson Park is having the soccer field, yeah.
So maybe we can get by with forty-five to fifty balls, or recover the littles, I think we'd have enough for, as long as the teams are practicing at the same exact time.
Now, what we.
Well, the littles are little, are smaller sized balls.
So you have thirty, twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty, twenty-five, or something like that? Is there a specific brand that you're supposed to go for, all Ryan Dale, new balls, reasonable?
I mean, as long as they hold air.
Not rubber tipped balls.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a specific brand for like a game ball, but we've never.
That would be a talk to the league thing.
Yeah, we just kinda use the best ball we have, yeah.
Yeah, they, I mean, half the games are the officials, right, so.
Right, is it like softball, it has to be a specific, are they all white?
Um, the balls themselves?
Yeah.
I don't know, we played with white and black or white and green, those were the two colors that I saw. I don't think there's a rule.
I literally never picked a soccer ball or anything.
We did have recs though.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, and it's where we called some of the games. The, what, so what size, so for the younger kids, is, are there two sizes that we should get, or are there more than two?
So there's a K-two, you said is a size three, and then, three, four, and five, six, I believe we played the same size.
The league, if you check with Mike or that, that, that will tell us, say what the, like, what the standard is for the, for the baseball. Or if you check with like, with a soccer version of.
When I looked online, it's twelve and up is size five, twelve under. So there's, it's like ten to twelve is a little.
Right, so yeah, I guess depending on the league. It'd be great if we could, as a group, just say, can we, like, as a league, maybe you could represent us. Say, could we just have three, four, and five, six, use the same size ball?
It'd be great that they have to try and keep trying.
So have they used the same size balls?
Well, I think they have, because we didn't shuffle, Shannon just gave us a bag, plop, and there was nothing special about it, I think. And on that, I don't know what K-two looked like last year, but when I coached it, it was really helpful to have a few really small, um, fields lined. So that it's, it was kind of like parallel with the parking lot down by the tennis courts. And then the kids were able to run scrimmages on those Saturdays. So they had the ability to practice on a field, and they had the ability to have multiple games going at once.
Yeah, they didn't have that last year?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't. I have no renovation of that.
No.
Raped, raped by the park, you want that, yeah.
Yeah.
They just had literally, kind of perpendicularly to the park lot, they had two little fields lined up.
For the little, little.
For the littles, which is, which is a midfield line and a pop.
And we've got, and we've got these cool PVC pipe goals that are like expandable and stuff too, that we can set up.
Yeah, those worked really well. And I, from what I hear, last year the K-two was kind of disorganized.
It was.
I don't know that, I wasn't, I don't have a kid.
We didn't have any volunteers.
Can you, so.
That's what I was just trying to look at.
How many volunteers did we need in order for that to be, four?
Four, for K-one-two.
So planning for four teams?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, um, sorry, we had forty last year, forty K-one-two. We needed four, um, coaches and no one volunteered.
Yeah, so it's good.
You just need somebody to grab that via date.
So then she had asked me to do it in my, but John had asked me to do five, six, there was like a big confusion, so, um, I don't know if John wants to.
So Jake's good.
We're gonna, we're, yeah, I think, yeah, we just gotta find four people to teach it to.
That, that was never that hard, I don't know what happened last year.
Well, so part of it, I, yeah, I remember saying I will coach a team if nobody will step up, and I never heard anything. So, from, you know, so I, I think that's.
I think you and maybe Phil said that or something, but you, you may have been one of those things.
Remember Shannon had COVID.
The ball at that time, yeah.
That, I think that was part of it, yeah. Uh, alright, so cool.
So soccer wise stuff, we have a ton of cones for, cause cones are always good in the soccer venue, all that. So we got a ton of cones that we bought last year. Pennies, do we need pennies for the littles, or something like that to, or the.
They get t-shirts.
They get t-shirts and t-shirts, alright, so.
For practices though, I think it's nice to have a bag of pennies.
Unless there are pennies that I don't know about, I've all got like.
Isn't there a giant tote full of random pennies?
There's a big bag full of them. I found them in my house.
I might have some too.
I don't know where they are.
Yeah, they're in the, they're on the back left of the shelf, I think there's.
In the shed.
In the garage.
In the garage, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I gotta find them.
I think there's a big thing of pennies.
I might install you.
The ones that were in my house were brand new, and I gave them to Shannon.
They may be the.
They were brand new.
Warsaw.
Maybe.
I should like, I went, see, cause all I was able to hand Skylar for pennies was this box of like assorted black and red pennies that I just scrounged from like bins that I couldn't. So I haven't been able to find pennies.
There's, there's a ton of blue pennies too. That was with the basketball stuff.
What's that?
I think these ones were red.
The basketballs, check, you know, check the basketball closet at Warsaw.
So they're the basketball ones with the basketball logos on?
Yeah, these are just straight up pennies, pennies. Yeah, check them, I think there's a big bag, we shoved them in there.
Hey, this is a silly one, but I always find myself in this position. Can you please order whistles for the coaches?
Thank you.
I always, hey!
Use your voice.
Yes. Yeah, whistles.
So for volunteers for soccer, we need five, six, three, four, and then four for the younger kids, so I need to find.
Is this Coed Soccer Club?
Yep.
It is.
So do you think the potential is they can have more than one, three, four, five, sixteen?
Seems like maybe, maybe.
The problem with five, six is that, um, sixth graders play, can play Warsaw to you. So we actually struggle to get sixth graders. So five, six, as far as we know.
Cause Warsaw struggles to get enough?
Uh, not for soccer.
Well, I'd see sixth graders should be playing if they have enough seventh, eighth graders.
That's kind of a new thing. I feel like that's a new thing.
Yeah.
Boy soccer doesn't struggle, maybe girl soccer does, I don't know.
There used to be a, I don't know if it was a rule or not, a rule that if you were like sixth grade and you, you had to play rec if you were doing this. I, I guess not on the right, well, an expectation that if you were gonna be doing sixth grade Warsaw sports, you had to play recs, so that you could still have the numbers too.
Maybe, so maybe, well, I'll do, I'll just like, I'll give a try and try it out, so that.
Yeah, he, he gets it, you don't wanna handcuff too young, your feeder programs.
He knows that, yeah.
Yeah, he'll get that.
Yeah, I think maybe just sit down like, hey, let's like, for like, how can we make this most effective for all the groups?
If we fill a full team of seventh to eighth graders, then we will not have sixth graders.
I think you'd be down if that conversation out, and I, I don't know if it's, yeah, yeah, I think.
And that keeps seventh, eighth graders from, it keeps them participating and playing and not getting either cut or never playing, because there might be a sixth grader that's better than them, but that, apparently you just want to be playing, stay on D. I think that's my opinion, my team, my two more kids are sixth graders.
Yeah, I kinda think that you need to, they need to make a choice and stick with it.
Yeah.
Because if like Molly's expecting to play field hockey this year, and last day she goes to the first practice, but there's enough seventh and eighth graders to field the team.
Cool, this, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you, yeah, you need to.
Get the recs before that, right?
Well, and they do assign up, but then the real deal is only different than the sign up.
Yeah.
And none, none of the numbers are, like, nothing is fat, right? Like, everything is just getting by, and I think that's all the sports. Like soccer, it has enough, but it's enough, it's not like overwhelmed.
Yeah, and maybe it's just like one of those, what do you do with, Warsaw boys have twenty-eight kids sign up and ten of them are sixth graders.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, what do you do?
Yeah.
I think that's the cut conversation, I mean, it's not cut kids, right?
You cut, yeah, right, it needs to be the sixth graders.
Well, so as basketball, like the basketball stuff, it's usually the sixth graders.
Right, yeah.
Usually.
It needs to.
Yeah, always be, right. But that's, but that's the, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, if you could have just kind of played that C, you'd probably go about it.
Yeah, I think that's a good, yeah. I think the goal is to get numbers up and everything.
To go on Liz's site or comment though, it might be cool to say if your sixth grader is going to play a middle school sport. There is like scholarship opportunities for them to play rec. I'm just thinking, as a parent, there, a lot of time goes into getting kids here and there to practice. So to say, we'd really like you to play rec, when they're already doing a school team, it's like multiplying by two, right? And then to pay for it on top of that, is kind of a turnoff. So if you have those sixth graders that are participating in Warsaw sports, maybe we say.
If you play both.
If you play both, you don't have to pay, or something along those lines, just to keep the program running. Because it's better for the fifth graders if the sixth graders play.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to think of.
Like for Rebecca, it was too much to play, it was too much to go to practices on top, after Warsaw practice, but she played Saturday games on the rec. Josh, he, I don't think it'll be a problem, but Rebecca was like, I was kind of pushing, you know, this is, I think it depends on the person.
Right.
Sixth grade's a funky year.
Yeah, yeah, having enough numbers is kind of funky graduation. Uh, okay, so we got goals, balls, pennies, whistles.
And then just timing, I think last year we started late, and so, just having to figure out a, a, a week that, okay, we're gonna start this week. Whether it's the week before school starts or the week of.
Right.
Kind of feel like it was a week or two after school started.
Yeah, that's usually, that's, it is late, but we have done that in the past, because a lot of the signups will come in. And they'd like handing other signups that first week of school to them.
Oh, we did last year.
We don't need, oh, sorry, we don't say we need to wait for that, we can start and still do signups, so I go ahead.
Right, it's, uh, last year we did like a clinic, the first week in September, to try to, uh, get people to sign up. So maybe we can do that at the last week in August instead.
And I think, I think that's what you were gonna say, is like, the, the website now, we don't need to wait for paper signups to go out, right? We can open, we can open up signups August first, right? As much as we don't wanna think about September, August first, right? Like, we can open up August first and start pushing signups, so by, and August, we already know our teams are gonna be like, hopefully.
Right.
Right, and then we can do the paper signs when we get to school, right? Get those kids that haven't, that are plugged in yet, but we've already kind of shaped our program so we could start, right?
An idea of numbers.
Yeah, do, we want, sorry, Jake, do, we said when we came in this year, we give it a season or two of electronic signups, or do we wanna go electronic only now? We said coming in New Year, we, we pull the band-aid off.
How many did you get?
So my vote is yes, I think, well, so I think we wanna go most electronically.
How many did you get paper? What percent?
I didn't count, uh, they're in a folder. Uh, I would say, say twenty-three, right?
How many?
But I think, well, what we can do is like, still send a take home from at school, right? Where we can like sign up online, QR code, boom, or, right, have paper copies available here at the town office. So if they do, like, maybe they don't have a credit card that they want, like, just add matters to them. They can come in, they can fill out a paper copy, and we can still process that. But the overall encouragement would be online, right?
But you're still, still sending home in backpacks when you're back to school?
So send home just a flyer, not, not a sign up form, just a flyer that says, sign up online, rec sports, live now, right? We can even throw a QR code on there, they can take a picture, and they can, so just a, just a mental reminder, sign up for sports guys, right?
Yeah, and then you could, you know, you could, you know, tap a page and, yeah.
You can even hang those around town.
Yeah, well, and then, and then also though, I mean, that we can sign up, like, if they do really want that paper copy, cause the internet scares them or something, right? They can come.
Come to the town office and sign up in person.
Cause you guys probably get requests.
Oh, yes, we have people that don't use the computer, people that will not put their credit card online, which is understandable, cause things can happen. And some people just don't want the information out there, they are adamant that they're gonna do it on paper.
So if we could keep, so paper copies here in the office and just direct them.
They'll take care of them.
And if we could peel most of the stuff off online, so it would save the burden of.
Yeah, what happens is the paper copies I've gotta hand them in place, cause I take it, yeah, right?
They're entered in.
They're entered, so it's, yeah.
And you can also do it email blast?
Yeah.
Email blast, text blast.
So if we say, let's go live August first with everything, right, we can, we can blast that on, like, send an email blast, and text blast, put it on social media, right? And kind of hit all the people who have signed up for anything already anyway, which I'm gonna guess is most of the people signing up for small sports. So they kind of see it in a couple of different places.
And we, whether they sign up on paper or online, they got an account created online for them, right? Cause that's what recs should everybody, so either they didn't sign up online, we create the online account for them to manage the team through, so they'll get an email blast.
Yeah. Cause, yeah, providing the email's part of the sign up, so.
Okay, soccer stuff.
Can I jump in real quick on soccer? So last year, John invited a few fourth graders to swing up to play, because they didn't have the numbers. And it didn't give all of the fourth graders the opportunity, so, well, no, and I understand, I understand why he needed to swing them up. But then it also left my team with like no skill.
Left you winning a big handcuffs.
We went from winning some games to losing them all.
Yeah, handcuffs every team all the way down.
So we just need to decide, how are we gonna do that? And I do think, like, we need to have the five, six team. If there aren't enough players, how are we going to fix it? Do we bring up the fourth grade? Do we give the opportunity to all fourth graders to play both teams? How do we manage that?
Do you think that's too much for one team, thirds or sixth, like you guys ended up doing with?
Yeah, that would be too much.
You had a big team, didn't you?
We did, but then when we lost, when we lost like. We did, but then when we lost, when we lost like six fourth graders that played up, then we didn't have.
They said you, yeah, uh some of your people didn't want to travel.
It's hard, it be, it all starts with Warsaw, right? It trickles down.
Right.
Right, if Warsaw, so the, well, it's Coed, you said, right? So if Warsaw boys or girls don't have enough and a bunch of sixth graders are playing.
Right.
Then five, six don't have enough and they have to pull fourth graders.
Right, and I think a lot of it, this is so silly, stemmed from not being able to hand out those sign up forms at school. Now that that's happening, I don't think we'll have as big of an issue with numbers. But like he started out, I think, with only eight kids. So the need was there for more kids, the fact that the fourth graders played up was not, like I wasn't mad about that. They just need to all have the same opportunities, I guess. I think.
You, you, you can't can't pick.
Right.
Cause that, you do get, you get in trouble that way, you can have a trial, you can have.
Right.
You know, whatever, rock, paper, scissors, as long as it's equal opportunity for all the fourth grade kids.
Right.
And you take equal number, you take equal number of boys or girls or whatever.
Yeah, I guess if you don't have enough numbers, then all the fourth graders try out.
Yeah.
And whoever makes it can make it in the.
And you take equal numbers of boys and girls, is that?
Um, no, it's, it's aged.
No, what I'm saying like.
Oh, I see.
If you're taking six, six fourth graders, you don't want to take six boys or six girls, it would probably be, you know, three and three.
Yep. Yeah. So that was just a little occurrence that happened.
I think if we start earlier, we get more signups, we're in better communication.
Right.
We have the coaches determine earlier, yeah, before.
Jake runs.
And Jake's here.
Jake runs the program.
Yeah.
And I, I think if we can do a coaches, like having coaches all like do an orientation together.
Yes, just like, yeah, absolutely. Cause it needs to run, it needs to run through you or confusion happens.
Also determining schedule, practices, practice schedule and field, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think baseball softball went really well this year despite the hurdles and other, on other towns caused which have to, so we know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, it'll be fun. I think if we can all just get together to begin the season, like, so John's gonna help again too.
Field hockey, and is there any, you're the only field hockey one in here, I think? Jake and I were talking, we bought jerseys for baseball softball.
Yeah.
We're gonna use them for soccer.
Yeah.
We were gonna use them for field hockey, we still made it. But we did notice, that's not really the field hockey uniform that we see up there, and we don't want our girls to field. Yeah, you can't mention it, I hear it.
Yeah, I mean, if we have money for it, great, but.
We're not talking huge numbers either, I don't think.
No, but it'd be great if there were huge numbers.
It would be great, but I'm saying, we're not talking a hundred.
Right, no, no, no.
We're talking high end, it'd be like thirty.
Yeah.
And I think that would be high end, it'd be a great number, but.
Yeah.
Problem is the, the sizes are.
It'll range from peanut baby up to more size.
My, my hope is for field hockey to be split into those two groups, that we're talking to Teresa, that was kind of the, the, oh, right, it's that a three through sixteen or three through five team, whatever we shake it out, that goes out and they play.
Yeah.
Right, and then have a younger group, like it's more, like, like with soccer, right? They're not traveling, they're doing some stuff here, maybe practicing with the bigger girls, um but more skill development, those sort of things. So we really only need to put jerseys on in the big group, right? Five.
T-shirts on the little ones, buy t-shirts for the little ones.
T-shirts for little ones, just like, yeah, so say, Paul's weird, right? Cause we've got three different sports that are all pulling from the same pool of kids. And I was just thinking about this on the way over, and we're trying to run feeder programs for each one, starting at kindergarten, which we don't do with any other, like that just seems like, I think that's why we struggle with the numbers in some respects.
Yeah, it's right, you just do it most in baseball softball.
Right, you know, I think, but I think that's, like, it's hard to run like a Pee Wee Soccer when we've got Pee Wee Field Hockey, Pee Wee Football, right? With a pool of a hundred kids, yeah, I think that's part of the.
Are you saying dissolve soccer, everybody could.
Yeah, well.
Don't scare.
Yeah, I, 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 I think like, yeah, yeah, I don't know, that is totally tangent, total tangent, but I was thinking about that.
So, t-shirts for the littles makes it a lot easier?
Yeah, I don't think our kids will look, I don't think our kids will look bad in t-shirts, as long as they all match and they're in nice shape for field hockey.
You say all ages?
Well, the nice t-shirts, the good ones, that they wore for baseball softball.
The jerseys, those jerseys.
Yeah.
You wanna put, the older girls in those too, is okay, or?
I think it's okay, if we have funds that we want to put towards something for uniforms, yes, they would love it.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm really firmly look the park, play the park kind of thing, so.
Yes, if you want that, then yes.
You know, I think we could spend a few hundred bucks if we wanted to buy tank tops and, will these wear shorts though?
They do, but if you wanna play the park, get them a, get them a coat.
Don't they usually wear a coat, right?
Yeah. They're Joey White Blacks, Bandit Golf and, or Tennis, they're the same thing, golf, tennis skirts.
Do people get their own though, cause like bottoms, everybody typically buys their own like football pants, baseball pants, people buy their own pants and the rec gave them the top.
Let's start with the jerseys.
Yeah.
Start with the jersey, would you, if we sent you in the right direction, would you help us like figure out what the girls, what they wear?
Yeah.
I don't, it's a trend down in a skirt thing, but I don't know.
Right, Molly has a field hockey uniform that was given to her once and never collected. I think it was part of that batch that stayed out in the rain.
Oh, yeah.
So I wanted to give it to you, cause that actually looks really nice.
Yeah, I, I would rather be go right to the place you ordered the baseball ones from, because there was baseball, field hockey, basketball.
Right. But you can see it, it's nice, yeah.
Same logo, same.
Well, maybe that's a reflection of the other jerseys, I mean, absolutely, yeah.
Try to build a similar style, kinda thing.
Yep.
You know, they, the, the size thing is big hard with field hockey, because they're tank tops. And you can't have like big baggy outfits, cause the girls got the bra things and all this stuff, but.
You just have to, right, make sure you order female, because they're gonna want it fitted as well. And make sure you get big ones.
And small.
And small. I think it's, and I don't have small kids, but you can at least put a small kid in a bigger jersey. You can't put a bigger kid in a smaller jersey.
But I know they're like, cause like Lady Bar, one of the girls, tank tops there.
Right.
And she put the tank top, it looked, and the t-shirt would be back underneath it, because it was a little bit low with the arm and her bra, I shouldn't name it.
Right.
So they're very self-conscious about that.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna need some help, but we'll definitely get crazy now.
Okay, so I'm gonna need, like I said, I need Teresa and Melissa to fight for field hockey on Monday, and I can kinda see what they say too.
Yeah. And we can do, we can do a log drive, we can do a log drive for field hockey uniforms for rec.
What's your money on the field hockey? Two thousand dollars, huh?
Field hockey, maybe.
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah. So there's money there too.
I also.
We need anything else?
Recs for field hockey, do you have numbers on our names or?
I don't, we've only ever hosted, I think, one field hockey game ever.
Back in the day when Dexter used to come down, right?
Yeah.
Dexter, maybe that one purple team was there.
So the older girls don't play, maybe that maybe.
Well, it's been a year five or a year six.
Right, they, they used to do a skill in Doyle and Hampden, but I guess they're not doing that this year. Somebody, I think Terry Jean or Teresa said that they're not doing.
Yeah, I talked to Terry that one day.
Yeah.
Except they're not doing it there.
So, we did that in the past, on Sundays, we would all go and do scrimmage. And then, years before that, there were games, I think maybe once, we played here.
Yeah.
On the Warsaw field.
So, I did talk to TJ one morning when I dropped off at camp, and she was talking to her friends, her, called in, like, you get a lot of Villanillo type stuff. And so she, she was doing a little labor and research, so when you talk to her, you might be able to.
And I talked to Teresa too, and she does stuff with Dexter Guilford, Doper.
That would be more competitive.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's also thinking like, I'm down, I think there would just be, I think part of maybe the opportunity, we create a little field hockey league.
Yeah.
If there's not.
That'd be good.
Right?
So another question, we used to play at Warsaw, but now the.
The Warsaw goals are down at the park.
Yeah, so are we gonna have a field hockey.
I would assume.
Field at the park?
Uh, Paul doesn't know what's happening with the goals.
Right.
I think they're gonna stay down there.
Yeah.
And if they are, I think that's what we would use, we'd talk to Justin and make sure his school is using stuff, but.
We see that coming back, I see that.
Going back to field this.
And if you have them back, yeah, Warsaw doesn't have a field right now.
Right.
Or field hockey, so they're gonna have to play down there.
Well, that's okay, so there's gonna be a field.
As long as there's a field, yeah.
Uh, and if there's not, then we talk to Justin about trying to use Warsaw, if they move the field back to Warsaw.
Or we line out a field.
What?
Or we line out a field, we might do field hockey.
Field hockey goals.
How would, how would the.
All the goals, we have them all.
Is cheerleading a fall form?
I don't know.
Um, no, I think it's.
It was winter, it definitely.
Just winter.
Was it just winter?
I think so.
I don't think they've had fall cheering for a long time.
Not at the schools, they haven't, but I think Rachel did something.
It's on the others.
Were they, they were gonna cheer at a football game?
Yeah.
They were gonna cheer in the end zone at a football game.
Yeah.
And some, for some reason, it didn't work out, they couldn't do it, but they had been practicing, that they were gonna cheer at our home games, those two home games.
They used to have cheering with the football.
They used to.
They didn't get uniforms until right before pictures this winter, so they didn't do fall cheering this winter, this fall, I don't think, because I remember she reached out to me like the day before pictures and said, we don't have like.
Was it basketball or something?
I think you're thinking of basketball, they were gonna cheer, that we had a basketball, we have like four games, and they were gonna cheer and they didn't. I think you're thinking of basketball.
Maybe I didn't think of basketball, it was COVID related.
I like the idea of cheering having one season and it being in the winter. Because it doesn't compete with any of, like, it's already free competing.
Yeah, right.
Just basketball, right? I like it, it just, that fits.
If she wants to do like some Sunday clinics or something like that.
Let's go.
Off the road.
Yeah, and I, I think we've already tried to do a couple of those, it didn't work, but, yeah.
And they did get uniforms.
I just, I'm not sure I know where those are.
Got them from NCI, I think, or it's, they're boosters, I think they got monies from NCI cheering boosters, because NCI wasn't using it, as I heard.
Okay.
They're basically, they weren't enough, cause they had to share them, but they did get uniforms.
We should check in about that, we should have uniforms.
For winter, for winter, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I thought they're expensive, they're expensive as heck though, I thought that much.
We ordered a couple.
Football's expensive, I can't say anything, but.
I don't know if it got returned. She had a boy, she needed a couple of the boy shirt, regular for a boy.
You ordered it, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know where they are.
Okay.
She probably.
She probably answered, she kinda like, which we've just gotta roll her in a folder and at the next.
And she's, she's been super easy.
Yeah, just put a folder in a little voice, so she feels supported and stuff.
Yeah.
For winter, we do that, uh, field hockey equipment, do we have goalie equipment?
Yes.
We found it.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in Melissa's garage.
Do we have one set of goalie equipment? And that's all we need, do we need a littles goalie equipment? I'm just trying to think of all the sports.
I don't think so, uh unless Teresa and Melissa say they think we do.
Right, would you check with them just on what the needs are?
Teresa was saying we need goalie equipment, cause she didn't think we had any, and then we found that we did have some, so. I think, I think, I think we're gonna be okay, but, yeah, but I'll.
Alright, so you check on that, I'll check on that website for field hockey jerseys, you know, actually the old group or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, football, we did meet with Luke, Jake and I did talk planning for the fall. And we've got a good solid plan there, it should be, football actually run pretty well in the past, because he's in a little group down there, down in the water, Villanillo area. Biggest thing with that would be numbers and coaches, we got some options for coaches for the little guys, we're just gonna coach the older kids. The one big expense there, we talked about conditioning of, it, we're starting to replace helmets. Cause some of them are getting very long in the tooth and are antiquated, safety stuff.
Yep.
So we gotta, we gotta date a folder and look through helmets and see how many of. He did a count of, right, now versus this and that.
We've got twenty five like the gel.
But we gotta figure out if they're, they're all gel, and they're all air, they're all foam.
There was one brand that looks new, and they, I checked, I went and checked, they all got the gels, there's twenty five of those. Uh, I don't know how many.
They must expire, like a car seat.
They have to be, they have to be reconditioned.
Reconditioned.
In which we gotta look through and see when they were reconditioned and stuff and, and start replacing a few as well. And reconditioning is extremely expensive. So compare that to just buying.
Have they been reconditioned since Luke played? I know they were brand new when Jack started in grade five.
So that must be.
So he's now gonna be in eighth grade.
And they don't, they have to be every, every year's.
What did he say, every year?
Oh, that's right, if they.
Reconditioned every year?
If they're used, they are reconditioned. And it's very expensive to recondition out, and it's a long wait time.
Yeah, so it's like a season ends, give them recondition for the next season, kinda thing.
We need to look at what's on the shelf over there, and we'll go through a cycle of reconditioning, and we may buy, we may need to buy some.
Which is expensive.
Yeah. We was buying Jack helmet.
Football is a sport that does not pay for itself, it can be the cost of the equipment, so we'll have to use the recreation concession fund.
Yeah, yeah, between that and planning some more fundraisers.
Yes.
Yep.
I think I'm good, like, whatever, we just gotta sit down with your.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not something else, yeah.
No.
Um, I'll just throw out there, for anything at Warsaw, we, we were, it sounds like we're gonna be all setting in to use the hut like we did last year for concessions and stuff and some of the, we did just get it all electrically refed. My guys from Chimbrow, we sent them over and they did the electrical work and refed it all. So, we won't be running extension cords and generators across the ground to the water anymore, which is great. It's just fed off a breaker at Cher's office, so we can blow up Cher's office. So that's good, right, it's all fed different, and we left, they replaced the panel, the breakers, they left a place to expand for a future scoreboard. They left a blank and a conduit, go out for, to run over to a future scoreboard, which is great. So it'd be good, now we just could have some events there, so we can use it and sell some stuff, cause we did make good money selling.
Can we try doing something like that at the park? Can we do concessions using the cart?
I think we should.
And score like a. Being able to keep score, we beat.
We have, do we hold these scoreboard?
I don't think so, and not that I can find, I don't know about the ones in the.
There was a two in Manson Park, but nobody seems to know who holds.
So I gotta, I don't, but I don't know who I would talk to to figure out who holds.
Who do they think holds?
I don't know.
NCI uses.
If we just start using them.
I bet Jason.
We'll find out pretty quickly.
I bet Jason would let us use them.
If we start using them and nobody says anything?
I can text him and ask. I can text him and ask. Or text him.
Well, if they start having games with N C I and scoreboards are still located at Manson, then I guess they're free game.
Right.
Yeah, right, they were still sitting there.
If you don't need it.
Yes, there are.
It'd be cool if we did like a round robin.
On any idea, two scoreboards?
Oh, if you know like the Dexter thing that we went to last year, like if we did like a round robin down at Manson Park.
Mm-hmm.
Could be kinda cool, but for soccer, right, and sell concessions at the round robin.
Yeah.
Just have a day of soccer in the park.
Field, field hockey play day, soccer, whatever it might be.
Just get people down.
Yeah. About the hosting, the football thing, right, they're supposed to be, we're supposed to host twice a year. Two homes hosting days, it's supposed to be four games. Last year got screwed up, it was only two.
Yeah.
Okay, for three maybe, there's supposed to be four games, which is a full day of football in the fall. So you know you can hammer around a ton of food.
Yeah.
And drinks and stuff like that, so those could be good moneymakers for rec, as well as I love the idea of using the concession ship. Especially if you're, if you're already, if you're using it all the time for soccer and stuff up there.
Yeah.
That it's clean, it's set up, it's moving around anyway.
Yeah, gotta talk to Jason, he did talk about setting it up over by, like over in the fields. Like in like a statue.
Well, they're not gonna do that, nevermind.
Uh, so I just gotta talk to him, make sure he's okay with this.
Well, they're setting it up, a permanent setup.
They're setting it up permanently over by the field hockey field.
We can do a tent.
But that's, we can, like, we can, we can run concessions with an EZU.
Right, we can do it easy enough with some tables and some coolers and a grill.
Jason Allen said they're gonna set it up at the field hockey.
I don't remember about the.
At Manson Park?
No.
No, at N C I.
And like, like leave it there all season.
We can come up with something.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we should definitely plan to do concession stuff, yeah. Alright, so we'll check, we may look at a scoreboard, but we likely have one next to one.
Do we know how much we made for spring sports for concessions?
Uh, I think netted at the end like twenty-four hundred or something like that, I think.
I can.
I think we netted like twenty-four hundred.
It should be, is it on here?
I don't think so.
No, that, no, we need to get that.
I think it was twenty-four hundred times.
Yeah, it was in that rate, I have, I have, I have, every day we sold on an Excel sheet that did net. Roughly a net profit, but the other day we paid back the initial deposit, paid back supply and had a net that we turned in cash.
Deposit.
Okay, you had twenty-one hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents, so two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine.
Yeah, alright, so, and we probably. We probably could've sold had a couple more days earlier in the season than we sold that we didn't quite get up and running yet for. Uh, and we hit the grab, we kinda figured a few things out, what sold, what didn't sell, so. Uh, but overall it's good, especially if we had done more softball, if we'd had things sold at the softball games too, we'd probably could've done a little more, so.
Yeah, softball's shrinking.
Twenty-four seventy-six for the ball drive.
Gotcha, right. Alright, so the big, we talked about the big purchases, things we need to get online, cause you don't stop selling out right now anyway. So we'll get on, order some of that stuff too.
Do you want me to go with the whites for the soccer?
I would send that link out to the people that know something about soccer and say, does this look good? And then get it.
Yeah.
Get it going, get a deal with your gastro, and then we'll get it rolling, yeah.
I would, don't send that to me, I don't know anything about it, send it to John, to Sarah.
Well, Sarah's, yeah.
Yeah. I don't.
All I want is just something.
Give you the frame, I don't care.
I just want something sturdy enough that, um, handles a hundred, like, uh, some kids hanging on them, because I've had goals. Right, because kids are hanging on them.
Like looking at the shade bit, we can make this one too much, let's go.
Uh, you may, we either get a plant on like sandbags or something for that hanging off it, it'll flip forward.
We need those for the smaller goals too.
So you need the sandbags or the weights, the bag weights. Uh, barbecue, we had on a list, is there any, I don't even know who's doing that, Lindsay?
I think Lindsay, I have the flyer ready to go, but I think Lindsay had reached out to you to get a list of.
I sent it to her.
You sent it to her, she's on vacation.
Yeah.
My anticipation, when she gets back, I was gonna kinda reach back out to her and say, what do we need to get this going? My, I took it as she was going to, um, send that up to the list of people Jay gave her, is how I took it.
Yeah, perfect.
Well, and you sent her some too, right?
I just threw some out that I knew that you might not have known in the season before.
From the season's.
And I think she reached out to Paul.
I, she, she told me she.
So I think she's on it, I will follow up, that, I was, that was in my brain.
She did have to get Paul's number, so she must've.
Yeah, she did, and she sent a text out saying that she had reached out to him and to see who was interested in helping and. Um, I think the goal was just to have a fun thank you barbecue for volunteers and have it catered by either. I was leaning towards, we had talked about Paul, we had talked about like Pat doing barbecue, I think that can get pricey, um, so we'll see.
Yeah, I think her goal in it though was to make it nice.
Right, and spend some money on it, but.
Right, you're thanking coaches and thanking the people that donated money, right?
Yeah.
And they donated a lot of money.
They did, same time, they, you know, they donated us for us to go spend a third of that.
Right, that's true, right.
It's worth twenty-four hundred dollars then too.
We all wanted to hand out filets and, yeah, I think burgers and dogs are fine.
I mean, you can still make it nice and do burgers and dogs and some nice salads and stuff and.
We could all have napkins.
Probably cloth napkins.
Okay, uh, so nothing else on that, alright. Family movie night?
Let's go, next, uh, next Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday night?
Yep, um, we're gonna watch the sandlot down at Manson Park. Um. Yeah, that's, I think we're gonna do some concessions that we have here, we need to get.
Yes.
Um, volunteers, I think it's gonna be pretty easy, right?
Bring in a lot of people, the money.
Uh, well.
Well, so did you guys, you got that picture of what I?
Yeah.
Did all of you guys get that?
Yeah.
So, I sent it, I got permission from the principals of our schools to send an email out to all staff. So I sent the flyer and I sent the signup forms to all staff in all of the schools as well. I've only heard that from one person so far, but I don't know that teachers are checking Marion Als daily account. Um, so, but I think of our plethora of educators and custodians and people will be fine for volunteers.
I mean, explain to me crowd control, is that keeping teenagers off of each other or like gunfights?
I think just, no, I think having people like.
We have a few adults keeping.
Just having people walking around.
Just with the flashlight, flash shining.
Exactly, yes, and if they can wear a hat, that'd be great. Sorry, it's kind of a tummy.
We're supposed to have adults with the kids, but what if teenagers?
Exactly.
Well, I was wondering, you say that, you have to be accompanied by an adult, yeah. I can help with concessions, that seems to be my jam.
Okay, well, I was thinking even parking, you know, just having an adult there, making sure there aren't little kids like.
Yep.
Zipping, you know, out on the road.
Can you get some safety vests from Chimbrow?
I have blinking hazard handheld, these things in my desk at work.
I really have no idea how many people to expect.
Right.
It could be ten, it could be a hundred.
So the, the flyer has been, like, it's been shared by like a hundred and fifty people, like businesses and, but I have to.
It's like an egg festival, fireworks show at the park.
There could be that, or there could be five people show up to watch some, like I was, I have no idea. Uh, I think that's kind of the, like, how I feel about it, it's like, I gotta be ready for three hundred, but it could also be five.
Concessions, you guys go check what we have, obviously we'll discover, we'll sell everything we have.
Yeah, so.
So will we move things over? Move from popcorn?
Yeah.
To.
Can we use that hut still? For, is that hut down there?
Um, I'd have to talk to Jason up in the window, I bet he'd let us.
Cause you could do popcorn, which is obviously.
Well, we're gonna do free popcorn, right, cause we got all those bags from movie theater, we're gonna use those. Uh, I don't know.
But it'll be like one popcorn per, or is it?
One popcorn per, like, I don't know, we could figure it out, one per family or one per kid or, I don't know. Uh.
Basically one of those trying, you just have to try and remember the kids and.
But all, yeah, it's also, like, you know.
It's, wait, it's gone, it's gone.
It's gone, it's gone, uh, we're gonna, yeah, get some glow sticks, um, but also try and sell out a bunch of stuff that's in the shed.
Lindsay sell out free drinks, I wouldn't do free drinks.
And we didn't put that on the flyer, or, or she didn't put that on the flyer, so I'm assuming that's.
Yep, that's good, try sell out a bunch of the candies, we didn't actually have a ton of stuff.
Yeah, so we are gonna have to buy some stuff.
Where do we buy it?
Sam's, or Sam's or Walmart, I, I don't know if we need.
It's also a great opportunity to get our count of dice arts with Catherine and that count of dice arts too.
Danforth's?
Danforth's.
Dice art Danforth's.
It's a D, I have a D right this time, I didn't say.
Do you get the products?
The stuff, yeah, at least sell us the off the shelf stuff, the, you guys are running, get, they'll do us another.
Can you, if you give them time, can they order?
Yeah.
So I wonder if that's worth doing.
If you just give them a list now, I think they can get it.
What they don't, what, either where they lose money is if they have to stock it, I mean, if they have to shell it. Or even like, they don't wanna have to store it, and somebody come in, they want somebody to come in and pick it up and bring it to our freezers or bring it to.
So it's just a matter of getting a list of what you might want, popcorn, oil, drinks, stuff.
Oh, quantities that.
Yeah, I believe you might plan for five people or three hundred people.
But if you order it.
Fall sports is right on the board too.
Exactly, well, use it.
Don't buy, don't buy a lot on the things that are gonna go bad in two weeks or two.
And so who would I talk to at Dice Art, Dice Arts, the Danforth's to do that?
I already got the stuff to Jill, I think we've already had an account set up.
Yeah, but he has to get a list of food.
Right, talk to Jill Arno.
Jill Arno.
Harper's mom.
Oh, okay.
Jill, yeah.
She'll give us the guidance on that, and do you eat anything on that?
Do you need to contact him for me?
Do we set up like a blanket P O kind of thing?
We do a blanket P O.
Is that how you wanna do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did it, so I did a P O for Walmart, thinking that that's what we're gonna do already, um, but I can give another one for Danforth's in replacement.
Yeah. Any, any, for this event, it doesn't, the timing doesn't work right on the day, but yeah, we can plan that for the fall at least.
Is it not worth going to Sam's or B J's or something like that for?
He's, he's said they would beat their pricing.
No, you're right, I mean, just like, as opposed to like going to Walmart and not making a trip to Bangor to go to Sam's.
We've gone Sam's, I don't know if we need enough stuff to go to Sam's for a one-time gig.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But like come fall?
Fall, maybe, yeah, unless, but we've got the setup.
I think if Danforth's can beat their pricing.
Right.
And it doesn't need to be stuff they regularly care, they can order.
Right.
Stuff they don't usually stock.
Yeah, that's, that's way better.
But did you have a list of like, what were your top ten sellers?
Oh, yeah. He's got.
A list of what we made the most money on per item and everybody checked what we did in sales on, and that we sold, so we know what our items were.
So can we have that, I have to make a list of what you need?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I can, I don't know whether it's for you, just make a share.
Or just give them the top?
Yeah, yeah.
Ten to money item.
Sugar.
We don't want, do pizza, right?
No.
But we're gonna do nachos?
Depends on if we get the cart.
Nachos a lot.
Like candy bars.
Oh, but we might skip on some.
Popcorn, candies, bottled sodas and.
I think, yeah, we hand out popcorn and then we're focusing on candy and like, I don't know if we need food like.
Typical what we did, candy, add roots, drinks.
We do can, like cans of soda?
Cans of soda, we've got, and some of those, we've got a bunch of that already, like just the low.
So those waters gave me the candy.
But I mean, that'll make concessions easier, right?
No, that stuff goes bad.
And I think we could eat, we can do popcorn without the cart, we just need an extension cord. Cause we're gonna show them we're right by the bathrooms anyway, so if we can just run an extension cord, you think that'll work? Right, and like we're just powering up, we gotta power up. The blower for the screen, the projector, and then the popcorn.
You don't wanna trip a breaker, need to move that part of the problem.
Yeah, um, so we gotta figure that out, but.
Pre-pop it.
Pre-pop.
Yeah.
Well, we can also.
You said, I really got the idea now.
Yeah, get a microwave and get the little mini bags.
You go flagship and they will give you a bag of popcorn like this for like ten bucks.
Yeah, they don't, they're a lot of, what is it? One of those places, just, yeah, they do the big bags, and they just dump it into the.
Like, I've done events, like movies before, and I've gone in and I've ordered like ten bags of that popcorn, and that's just what we came down.
Yeah, sounds like a really good idea.
Right, um, so there's also, like, we could do something like that.
Cause your power comes up, it goes way down when you're not doing that.
So we didn't have to make the popcorn, we could buy it from flagship and it's to be in the theaters.
Possibly, yes, sprinkle a little bit of our salt on it.
Salt on it, yeah.
Get the squirt butter, I mean, you have to get the squirt.
Don't I have to deal for you? We've got two of the really old pumpers, nice and rusted out on the bottom.
Right.
Three big jugs of unidentified dated butter, no date.
No date.
No, it's not true, but it's, but it's.
Butter isn't gonna go bad.
No.
This butter doesn't.
Neither does like.
Apparently.
Plastic, right?
Oh, yeah, so, off topic, I got, Jason Allen said that the electric scoreboards are M C I's.
Prove it.
Just saying.
So do we need to purchase, like purchase them or put it in a budget?
Are they gonna use them?
Well, yeah, maybe.
Maybe we can borrow them after.
Again, it is, it is one thing, it'd be nice for the rec to have a scoreboard to have on our field, so there's no fighting or arguing about.
Well, let me reach out to Josh too, cause he mentioned that he thought rec had a scoreboard, like he asked me, why isn't the scoreboard being used for softball?
Say Claire?
Yeah.
He told me he bought one time.
And I, like, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, he did tell me he bought.
Yeah, so.
Maybe it's the worst, maybe it's the worst season.
Good, yeah, so let me ask him, see what you, like, see what we.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be good.
Is the movie event, is it an event that people can say they're interested in coming on Facebook, just to try to get a number?
So I made the event, but that's what I'm saying, that has nine people saying they're going, right?
I couldn't say I was going, all I could do was say interested.
Your wife says she's going, she's one.
I didn't say interested or not interested, that's all it's about.
I, so I, I gotta mess with the settings.
Yeah. I'm not even seeing. Oh.
I'm going.
Oh, it says I'm going. What?
Liz does not care that's how.
Not going.
Not going.
Unfortunately, I'm really not, but like, I'm aware. I've always. I can't even volunteer.
And you have a family?
No, we have family thing pop up, it's like, really, all your second, I'm always, I might be able to help you tear down.
Let's go.
I might be home by ten.
Alright, anything else on movie night?
I think, I think, I think we're good, it's just, we'll see what happens when it happens.
Table, maybe an EZU, a table.
EZU tables.
Top form to keep popcorn warm. The machines to keep it warm.
Stuff to plug it in, I guess, but.
You should plug it in, but it doesn't have a second outlet running, the projector right here, and we need a screen projector.
Screen projector, we found a projector, so. Ready to roll.
Where's the screen?
Alright, I got the lights, it's just a movie, that's all.
Well, that's cool. Okay, um, should we, should we let the cops know?
Marty did.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I talked to Marty and just to make sure like he ever can be in the park, if he's gonna send somebody down to like check on us.
Yeah.
So they're aware it's happening.
Driving through the parking lot or something like that.
Yeah. And Paul gives a thumbs up too, which is, yeah.
Movie night, good?
Yeah, good.[1493.98]
Uh, one I wanted, definitely want to get to is rec fees. And the proposal to bring to Catherine the council on tweaking the ordinance or restructuring rec fees. Do we haven't changed them in twenty years?
I would say fifteen years.
Yeah, so I did this outreach to, the same outreach, right, for rec fees. And most towns do it like we do, where you pay to dissipate, right, and they're a lot more expensive. Newport wasn't one of the anomalies, if you live in Newport, it's free, and if you're for outside of Newport, it's twenty bucks.
No wonder they have so many teams.
But they, their rec budget is huge over there, because they pay for like every, like, when I went to buy some supplies for white, they're like, oh, Gene Crockett called. And he said, just buy every box of baseballs you have and every box of this, like they just buy like for the next five seasons. I'll use it eventually, buy me two thousand dollars worth of baseballs and five thousand dollars worth of this. So I don't know where the budget comes from.
Well, of course.
So I talked to like Herman, Herman is, like Herman Soccer is forty-five for in town and fifty for out of town for the little kids. And for three, four, five, six, it's fifty-five in town, sixty for out of town. Football is a hundred and sixty-five per kid in Herman.
That's cause of the cost.
That's how they pay for the equipment.
That's how they pay for it, right. Uh, Bagel is actually not quite as expensive, but similar. Pownau is a little more reasonable, it's, he sent it to me, it's forty-five, they didn't have football out, but it's like forty-five or fifty bucks for soccer, for field hockey and stuff. So we're definitely way on the cheap end, we can't make a certain jump up to. Oh, Pownau Football did have, it was ninety dollars a piece for like Pownau Football or something like that, I'm getting them all confused, but the point is they were a little more expensive, but, um.
I don't think you can go, I mean doubling it would be, makes sense based on what they're saying, but we can't do that to people. But I do think it might be worthwhile to have it on a tiered system based on what you are, like if we have to have our helmets for football sent out every year to be reconditioned, then you have to be one to play football.
I, I do, I agree, I think some of the sports do need to be a little more than others, as much as it sucks, I don't want to discourage, especially football being probably the lowest numbers of any sport we have.
What soccer costs next to nothing.
Right.
But, right, it does cost more to run, yeah. And you're keep, you wanna double, but the same kind of, we're talking twenty bucks doubling is different than like fifty bucks doubling or whatever. I could see soccer going to like thirty bucks or something, thirty to, and like forty for out of town maybe? And football going to like maybe forty and fifty?
Yeah.
Football taking a little bigger jump.
So I'm wondering, I could see like even go to thirty-five like for everything, like a ten dollar jump is a big deal. Maybe we cap it, like there's a family, you know, so if somebody has four or five kids, I mean, say you don't have to pay over a hundred bucks or something for a season. I don't know, something like that.
Yeah.
But I'd like to have it be, any district kid can play for that much. And I know like taxes and all that, we use Pittsfield taxes.
They don't pay for any of the stuff.
I know, but they're like part of the community, this is the only place that they can come to play. I mean, they can go to other, other places to play, but why would they when they grow up playing where?
We could, over the towns and say, you have X amount of kids who are playing sports, would you like to contribute this amount of money for those kids?
Right, yeah.
Or like, like library, the town pays for their registration fee.
We tried that on the library for the capital campaign, um, two towns did contribute, one said no. For the library, uh, they contribute, several towns contribute to this library so the students can come. But we haven't gone out for the recreation.
I just, I really. I can reach out to Detroit and just, if you want me to, and just see what they would think.
They say they should all play in city.
As Pittsfield.
Yeah.
I get the point of what you're saying, yeah, I mean. Taking the most out of it, it comes down to dollars and cents, that we've gotta have the money there, but.
Right, I just, like, I'm thinking about our region and our socioeconomic, like, we aren't the most affluent place in the world.
Yeah, money comes from somewhere. It has to, right, so if it doesn't come from here, it comes from Pittsfield budget, or it comes from somewhere, somewhere, we gotta pay for the stuff.
We also have scholarships too, that no one takes advantage, well, maybe a couple of people, I may need to push those.
No, we have some money for that, um, we didn't have a lot of applicants.
Which is good, I think we have a nine hundred dollars in the scholarship account.
Oh, is it that much? Okay, I know why.
If we're low, like, I smell that started as a Warsaw thing, as a paid for project.
And I bet if we create, if there's a way for people to donate, like, to pay for, there, there's ways we could boost the scholarship counter.
We do have people that will come in and during affluent years, they will contribute to the scholarship fund on their own.
Did we have that anywhere on the website?
Uh, scholarship?
That there are scholarships available?
I think it may be written like.
It's star scholarships are available. Yeah, it is.
But it's not, it's not like, you know what I mean?
Maybe we should put it on, it's a Facebook blast, like just a reminder, there are scholarships available for registration or.
Application, we can put, make a digital application, so you can comply.
And maybe on the payment thing, is there a thing that, or yeah, is there a thing that says, check this if you need.
There's no.
They can't register until the, till it's accounted for, right?
Uh, they're, they're in the, in the what's due on their account thing, we can apply a.
I can't, yeah, we can.
We can apply.
So we can waive it.
Wa, we can waive it, or we can.
We can even, we can make it code, code things weird.
My only fear of doing that is maybe you do district kids and not out of town. Not my only fear, I guess, it has more kids, but you don't, you know what I mean?
Just seventy, fifty-three.
That's mine. Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, I missed, yeah.
How do we verify that they're district kids?
Their address.
Not, I mean, but you could have district kids, so super agreements. Right? And you could have non-district kids that are homeschooled.
So rec, how about we say residents of Burnham, Detroit, and Pittsfield, rather than district kids.
Can you do it by zip code, right, on the, online?
Yeah, also online is automatically pinged and applied zip code.
And you, you can type in what zip codes apply to, you got a district, you can tell.
So yeah, I guess my purpose was trying to include Burnham and Detroit in the same bracket as the Pittsfield kids.
What about, um, up, um, a thing at five dollars for everything and then next year another five dollars? Or you wanna do it all at once?
Do the Netflix thing, get you a little bit every year, yeah.
People are gonna have a hard time with this, right?
I think, I think five bucks is a good, I think you go up ten, fifteen bucks.
And they wanna, I mean, if they wanna go one town down, they're gonna triple what they're paying just for soccer.
And if people block at it, I guess you just give them that information, this hasn't been changed, it's fifteen minutes, you know, it's fifteen years since it's been changed, if you go, these are what all the other towns are having. And there are scholarships available.
Scholarship real inflation is killing.
We just say inflation.
And this is the cost.
I mean, fifteen years ago, baseballs were under a dollar a piece, like I remember buying back, like, wait, they were, you're under a buck a piece, they're over five dollars a baseball now.
I think, I don't think people, including myself, has any idea how much a ball costs, like, so when you sit there, if people do complain, you just give them the facts of this is how much it costs to run, you know, to buy a soccer ball. And we want our program to be successful, we need to buy equipment, we, we do fundraising to do other things, but.
Sure. Bassing.
I mean, ten bucks.
Game basketball is seventy dollars now. Which is crazy.
But that's my opinion, I mean, I don't think five bucks, five bucks will irritate people because it's gonna go up and it's not gonna help us too much, you know what I mean?
That five dollars, I think also goes into the non-resident resident conversation too, cause if it's only five bucks more, is it really making that much of a difference between kids? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I was, I was gonna throw up, increase than resident, non-resident difference, so, so that was kind of, I guess what you think was going for.
I'd rather see everybody have an increase of ten to do that.
Do other towns all do, like, is it across the board regardless of where you're from? But Newport not, Newport obviously is.
I have to.
Newport's funny though, cause doesn't like, like Palmyra has its own rec, Corinna has its own rec.
Right.
Fairfield is the five town.
Clinton has its own rec.
No, well, it's Fairfield.
Is it?
Yeah.
They have their own rec. Clinton, there's like a Clinton Park rec.
There is?
The sports.
Yeah, I don't know about the sports.
The sports is the town.
I use the thing. Right, so in Herman, this is Herman, right? In Herman, football in town, out of town, doesn't matter, it's a hundred and sixty-five bucks a kid. Soccer, a hundred and sixty-five dollars for football and football. Soccer is a five dollar difference, fifty, it's fifty dollars for residents, fifty-five for non-residents. For five, six, three, three, four, five, six, forty-five and fifty for K through one and s, and two, and then pre-K is forty, forty-five.
Where's that?
Herman. That's the one that sent me screenshots, I can't get them.
Yeah, I feel like they're a completely different socioeconomic bracket than we are.
But again, the cost of supplies aren't different, I, I get it, I get what you're saying, I, I'm not gonna go to that, I don't think we should go to that. But the cost of softballs is the same, the cost of soccer balls is the same, the goal is the same.
Right, my brain is that kids can't participate if their parents can't afford it, I guess.
I know.
Right, so that's different. The balls are at the same cost, but the number of kids that can play would be different if their parents make more money, you know what I mean?
I, I do.
Right.
But we still have to pay for things.
For sure, but you're not gonna have to pay for anything if you don't have any kids signed up, cause their parents can't afford it, right?
So I think what we do is we, like, we up the price, but we also push the scholarship thing harder, right? Like if we, like, make that really loud, like, available.
I wouldn't push it that loud either, I'd have my son go that far.
Right.
Say what?
I'd have my son, because if you get everybody.
Do you have, do you have to qualify, they have to, is there certain qualifiers?
I gotta look at that, it's an application, I might have one person ask for a scholarship.
Can you ask for somebody's income?
If you're applying for scholarship, yeah.
This has been pretty informal, if they needed the money and work, like, main care would pay for the students, or the ones that couldn't pay would just get a scholarship by talking to the rec director. So we didn't go through a whole application with, um, funding levels and everything. But if you're gonna push the program, we probably would need to do that.
Yeah, it was gonna put him in a sticky spot for who do you give it to, who don't you give it to?
Right, but do you work with the schools and say, like, if you qualify for free or use lunch, although we don't even have that, remember, because it's free? They still have to fill out the blue paperwork though.
I think there's enough like sort of, like, it's, it's mildly, I've had one person reach out for a scholarship and that one person seemed a little embarrassed to be asking for it in the first place. Um, so it feels like it's, there's a little bit of a stigma that comes like, hey, I don't have thirty-five dollars to pay for my kid to play. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, there may be there'll be people that take advantage of it, but I think the majority will be people that are like.
So when we did this in the office, we just, it was very informal, we just wrote them down and then they didn't pay.
And you just transfer funds, I got, from scholarships.
At the end of the day, yeah, so they didn't have to fill out an application, we just talked to them off on the side.
Yeah, and I think there's also, like, there's fundraising opportunity there too, cause I think if you put out to the community like, hey, thirty-five bucks, we, would you, like, you could market it and like pay for a kid to play, right? And I, I bet you'd have a bunch of people donating, like, if our fee's thirty-five bucks, I bet you have a bunch of people like donate thirty-five.
After the school gave us money for the scholarships, other people came in too once they heard about it.
So there may be ways like, get some money, like, help pour some money.
Oh, certainly, yes.
If it gets more kids playing, that's.
I think that's a little more.
So do you earmark some of that fundraising money that you guys just did? As a cushion, you know, for the scholarship fund? And I'm sure businesses would be thrilled to think that they're paying for kids that can't afford it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good cause.
We go through the year, I mean, do we agree that we should make a bulk of fees?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so much, this, this way.
Yeah, to Liz, to Liz's point, you can't do it twenty bucks per sport, cause that's probably, but except for maybe football.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's.
It's a good sized jump, but five bucks might not do enough to outweigh the irritation of all the changes, they're not paying the price anymore, I don't know.
So ten?
Ten, yeah, I'm down for ten, unless we play more.
If you ten bucks, we had a hundred and twenty kids registered for spring sports, that's twelve hundred bucks extra, that would come in through.
I think we also like, summer, summer programming just pours money into these things, it doesn't cost much.
And it's way cheaper than what like we also charge us, we're getting a good deal, and the program.
But I think there's, like, there's opportunities for us to feed into like footballing stuff, are there ways to?
Yeah.
You know? If we jump ten, I, I think, I think we put football at fifty bucks.
Football needs to be higher, because we can't pay for the equipment.
Without buying any equipment last year, we still lost money just to pay for the officials, it was nine hundred dollars for officials last year.
And I think if we have it, I, I guess my, my, like, my inclination is to go towards a service, I guess, if we're gonna increase it beyond that, I think we gotta like pad it, so it's like, a little bit, like, ten bucks this year, maybe ten more next year. But like, we do it all at once, I think people are gonna be like.
Oh, yeah, no way.
Yeah, that's, so that's my reaction.
Yeah, and we go from twenty to forty, yeah, yeah. So like, propose like thirty and thirty-five being the new standard?
Are we doing the out of town thing or leaving that?
I don't know, it's one of those things where, does five bucks really make that much of a difference? But also, is nobody's complaining either, and I don't know.
Yes.
Is anybody?
Yeah. But I see the point of like, if you're a Burnham kid, you feel like Pittsfield kid regardless, right? So I get that point too, yeah.
But, I mean, the economics on it, I think, which, which socks is, they're up there, ninety thousand dollar, you have the budget at the town level every year for a rec department and the rec director.
So maybe, maybe the thing to do is to like make a plan, so we stick with the, we stick with the resident, non-resident difference, but then make a plan to approach the towns and say, next year we wanna get rid of this, cause like, all these kids play here, we want it to be equitable.
I think that's a good idea.
Right? And then like make up like this is so, hey, and be like, could you contribute a thousand bucks to rec in here?
Right, we can give, come up with some sort of numbers as, on average, Detroit has so many kids that are playing rec sports, Burnham has so many, so then you have some data to present them with.
We'll have some data from spring, we'll have new data from this fall, and throw up some science behind it, and like all kids to feel equal and all kids to be treated the same.
But we want more of your kids to play, right, so, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So thirty, thirty-five, and then do we do fifty for football or?
I mean, fifty, yeah, but.
It's going from twenty to fifty, they've got one big jump.
Okay.
I can see forty.
Yeah.
The first year.
Forty, so thirty, thirty-five, and forty for football.
Just a blanket forty.
Forty, forty-five, or just?
Forty regardless, maybe, I don't know.
Forty regardless.
Forty, forty-five.
Okay.
I guess it goes up twenty bucks, cause they pay twenty-five now.
I probably lean towards forty, forty-five, just as they're assisting. Some, some towns do fluctuating fees, if we go away, the big expensive football this year goes up, next year it might go back down.
Over as that?
It seems like it'd be a lot to manage. But it's an option, I guess, so Catherine, we propose a fee structure and bring it to the council?
Yes, so this could be done at the same time that you come in for your field maintenance fee.
So we can't actually put signups out until this goes to council meeting?
It has to be done by a order under, um, the town charter.
So that pushes back our signup date.
Can you tell, can we do that?
Or you just put it in for the next four after this one.
Or we do it instead of fall, we do it for.
When's the next council meeting?
Uh, let's see, I hope it has to be filed, um, tomorrow and it'll be on August second. They have a special meeting tomorrow, I know that.
August second is the next year meeting.
Yeah, August second is the next regular meeting, and then there'll be a meeting on August sixteenth, and it appears we might have a meeting on the twenty-third, which would be a workshop, but if we needed to, it could become a special meeting.
If we get it to you tomorrow, it can make it for the second?
Correct, yes.
And then if the second can.
Do you just need like a table of proposed old fee, new fee, would that be sufficient enough? I can get that to you.
If we can do the field thing too, that would be good, then you'd only have to come in or get on Zoom once.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's doable.
The field thing, I can have the, I just won't have the irrigation part of it.
That's okay, that, that can be separate.
Okay.
So what is it that needs to be at the meeting?
What's that?
Some of those needs to be at the meeting?
Yeah.
You down? Cause that's the same as, that'd be a unit too.
Yeah, I can do this. Too small, too small, it's all right.
But I'm, an anxious mess.
So if we do August second, if it's on the council meeting, say they approve it the second, we can move forward with getting signups within a day or two.
So this is the second, we can do that.
You could be all set to go.
Yeah, you can hit it out.
Let's wait earlier.
Yeah.
Still early.
Okay, cool, we follow playing updates, we kind of already hit all that, sounds like we're, rec, we're gonna try, other than football, we're mostly gonna shoot for Nancy Park, soccer, be lucky.
If we can, I mean, that field's not being used a lot, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have all them stuff set up down there, we'll have a shed down there if I ever finish putting the roof on it, but we'll have a shed.
Let us know if you need help.
Ah, I gotta call your husband, cause your husband's the only way I'm gonna get it down there.
Yeah, he was just hanging a J a second ago, so.
Oh, there you go, no, it's all, it's all good, I just gotta put the shingles on it and the front door.
So can you?
I almost fell through the roof, so.
Can you email me the dimensions and then what you think the estimated cost is, cause we have to add it to the insurance policy?
Oh, yeah, oh yeah, we know exactly what the cost is.
Cause we know things can disappear or have things happen to them down there.
The thing that disappeared, but it might be smashed down.
So does the ship belong to records of large trustees at Nancy Park?
The Nancy Park trustees paid for, not to exceed X number of dollars for a shed for, right, that's a good point, they paid for it for rec use, not to exceed a certain amount, so I don't know.
We need that.
Rec technically owns it, or Nancy Park trustees own it.
It won't matter, cause they're all not, the town makes sure, so it isn't gonna matter.
Yeah, I can get you the, the paper from that.
And nobody should have to share a field down there.
That's what I'm saying.
Period, right?
Just a little.
Soccer fields are different sizes.
Yep, and they're, right, they're side by side, so.
They typically has been usually three. Isn't there mostly three?
For the littles.
The littles.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is the bigger kids though.
Oh, 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 sorry, but even the littles won't use it, use the big kids.
They'll use it.
Where's Warsaw play soccer, backup at?
Warsaw?
So you're saying three, four, and five, six have different fields?
Yeah.
And different sizes? So we're gonna have different goals?
Yeah.
Right.
Three, four, they already have the three, four littles.
We want to move big balls.
Well, we might have to go, put something, I don't know, put it together.
Okay, yeah, but not like.
Oh, we have to put it together.
Every practice.
You know FedEx a goal?
Super goal.
They just drop it in the park.
It's welded frame, so they're good, that's coming all together.
Yeah, wow. Oh, just not in that arm?
Coming off the truck.
I'm hearing you being a jerk, sorry.
We gotta put the legs on the back and put the.
Well, there were some inside that looked like you probably assembled it.
Yeah.
Uh, I threw a text message over with the self-defense thing. I, it got me, I guess, when I called it one night and was thinking about it, and I literally had talked to Joe Portier for years about doing it through M C I, and it kind of just never really went anywhere. And I don't think it would be a cool thing to offer, and it's non-sport related, so it's something different.
And they, people would have to pay for it?
I, I would propose trying to pull together and do it for free.
Okay, one, a one session or?
That's what I talked to, like, talked, I called Mark Brooks, and I know Joe's on the town right now, I think, so I called Mark about what we do, and whether we do like little kids, high school kids, adults, cause they all have different like kidnapped, assaulted, just, you know, with like, there's all different like risks and things that, you know? And so how it would look like it, is it something you do like a one-time event, once a year? Is it a, you know, a series of like, once a week for three weeks, every fall, like, just what could you do, you know? Cause is there something cool we could give out, like, I know Joe Portier was used to a self-defense class, and he gave up, at the end of the class, he gave up these little Kubotons that go on your keychain, a Kubotons, I don't know what they're called? It's basically a hard, a hard gowel that during the class, they teach you how to use it, use it for self-defense, learn how to hit pressure points on your key, with your keychain, and stuff like that, so.
Will they be able to be useful?
Will they be able to bring it to school?
There's just a little piece of wood on the back, so. Was that a case, I wish they would, but.
They would.
But anyway, I'm like, is that something you guys would be interested in?
I think it's simple, but, yeah.
And then that's something that's reaching out beyond the sports realm, it's just, it's a community thing.
Yeah.
And it's a community service, cause we don't want to make money off it, we want to provide a skill, and it's beyond just like a physical thing too. It's what, you know, alerts to come for, what signs and behaviors and situations to avoid, and whether it's little kids and, which is what spurred it, right? It was little kids and people with vans and vehicles and stuff, or it's teenage guys or girls going off to college and being in questionable situations or, you know, I don't know.
That may be something too, I don't know, the town, I mean, police or, yes, they are now, but it may be something we want to loop the.
Except take Marty, you know, Mike, Mark Brooks. I don't know how the S P D related that stuff, or, yeah. But have you ever heard anything like that, you know?
Uh, we had something in the past, it wasn't quite that sophisticated, the police did it, but yes, it sounds good.
Oh, this won't be sophisticated.
Would it come out of like, we have a budget for it, right, healthy, healthy community resources for it?
Yeah, there is, there is, there is some monies in here that we could use for things like that too.
Yes, and we have some police funds.
Police funds?
We have some funds in the police department that can be used.
Get help community resources grant, things like that, so.
Yeah, we've been lucky to get several grants from Healthy S P.
I, I, I finished closing the loop with Mark and, and Joe and Loop whoever in. Wants to help kind of organize it when we get through the information, and that's what I was saying, we can do it in the fall, we can do it in the winter, we can do it anytime that makes sense. We can do it in a lull between the rush of activities, whatever you wanna do.
Like March, February, or March April?
Next July.
Next July.
Alright, cool. Anything we can talk about for fall?
Oh, probably.
We'll, we'll text what. Uh, I had fundraising on here, but. Lindsay, I think, had thrown out a fall fundraising idea, I don't know what, what we planned, I don't know, Ball Drives Easy in the fall, come out like Labor Day weekend or something, maybe the next weekend or something. Ball Drive, and obviously was what, twenty, twenty-five people for three or four hours and brought in twenty-five hundred bucks. And that was, the timing of that was almost not ideal, because we had stuff going on that morning, and a lot of people were gone, we hit them at noon or one o'clock, came off the day. And so I think we could've even, even go further, but.
Yes, we could, yeah.
And a week of giving campaign, which we talked about, but never launched, that could be a great fall thing, like Lindsay, who talked about. To plaster just for launching a rec week of giving, hopefully this coincides with MCI's week of giving. And just allow the hoes, aunts, and uncles and grandparents from afar to online make a contribution to the big field parks and rec, and we have a certain goal or we want to reach certainties of that. I think that'd be an easy, probably a pretty successful one. And do we ever do shout-outs for the members on social media, that's one of the things that was.
That is not happening.
Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna.
I don't know what those, what do we want those to look like?
Yeah, something, we're gonna help, we're gonna help.
Yeah, just let me know what.
I think Lindsay was working on it, we were gonna get her videos and pictures.
Oh, that was your thing?
That, I did, I did all that.
Okay, so I think she was gonna do it with the Fiverr, or she was gonna reach out to somebody to?
Okay, was that what it was, we're just gonna do that video thanking, these logos and stuff?
Right, because I think otherwise they're, they should be on the website, their company should be on the website, not on like the signup form, although that's going away. But I think Lindsay was gonna reach out to Fiverr, have a video.
That was your thing, cause we talked about showing, if there was a video, showing the video at the movie night before getting started.
Yeah, it was not like that, we were in.
I'll get back.
In my mind, I was taking a look on our Facebook page, probably back when they were coming in, like, thank you to our newest MVP level donor, and show their logo and. And, and part of it was to like inspire other companies to also donate, see that, you know, we want that recognition too. So after the fact, it's probably less impactful now. Alright, that's all I really had, I need to collect banners, I can do that.
Yeah, what are we gonna do with those?
Collect them, stack them, roll them.
You're gonna put them up somewhere in fall?
And in the fall, we're gonna put them up again, we don't know how to get them, we're gonna do it.
We know where.
We're gonna look at the banners and see if specific relatives go to one sport or other, and if they don't, then both divide. Try to get equal, equal kind of.
So obviously you have to uproot them every game, we're not gonna be able to leave them there.
Yeah.
I don't see them leaving at the football field for Warsaw, I don't think.
We're talking a little bit about that.
And then, I don't know that you can legal down at MCI, cause.
MCI?
Uh, yeah, MCI.
Good answer.
I foresee them being a target for, for kids.
There's a chance of that.
But, cause they're not gonna be attached to it.
Cause they're not gonna be on the fence like they were at soccer, right? We, we, my, my idea, my thought, the only way to get them up there without fencing is heavy stakes and l- l- luan plywood to vacuum. But even so, like they might tamper, they could draw a shield over it or something.
Or kick soccer balls out and then crush chocolate with their feet or, I don't know.
Try and die a few little ones or something, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, what to think about that?
They still get pretty good visibility at the park.
Yeah.
They do what you want it to be at the field where people are all at, so we'll have to, we said we, they got a year of FaceTime, so we're gonna have to figure something out.
I mean, I'm just thinking, we put stakes and just move that like through the four or the eyelids and just kind of leave them through there, stake them down, if that'll work.
Yeah.
That's what I think in the brain, that, that goes, so only so far.
Yeah, we'll call it something, yeah, yeah, like I said, we, we, zip tie loops, a little bit of loops, they can just slide them up or slide them up when we're done.
I don't know, something.
Great, anything else? It's been a long one, but we're a little fast due, we haven't one, so.
Do, have you ever had like a regular standing meeting?
No, we always, at the end of the meeting, schedule the next meeting, some of our time gets a little bit loose, but. Do we want, uh, do we want to schedule a next meeting now over here?
I think we need to, based on schedules.
We had talked about schedules and then after, well, after the council meeting.
After the council meeting?
After the council meeting?
We'll just be able to tweak the fees and the fees can go live.
You can do the fees and you can just say play on the field thing.
Yeah, I can pull a trigger on the field thing. So I don't think we need to get better after that one, if you do, but we do need to get together for the photo.
Right.
Or we can just plan our meeting around that.
Is that something we're gonna put on, on Facebook, but are we gonna put like in Rolling Thunder? Or how are we gonna get the word out there, so that it's not just like, so it's out there?
We usually have a little ad, depending on what the item is, ads in Rolling Thunder are not that expensive at all.
Yeah.
My Rolling Thunder comes from that plastic bag.
I think I'm the only person who reads it.
I, I literally, I.
It's the, it's a generational thing, right?
I convinced the kid not to even leave it on my doorstep.
And then I put it like, well, don't, I'll take it from my stove. Which is probably why I do that, because then I go.
Well, I don't need them anymore, cause I convinced the kid.
Really, I think Facebook, like.
Two, one on each door.
My age and younger, Facebook is what works for me.
I think it's gotta go further on Facebook than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, cause people see it, and if they have a friend who has it, where they like tag their name on it, like they'll share it or.
I just know the Facebook, like, it seems so limited, like sometimes I'll see stuff and other times I won't, so it's just like.
I, I can't, I.
Yeah, I'll cover them more, we don't have.
I've never figured it out to the single, I don't matter how many times I click it, I follow it, I go to it, it never shows up in my feed or anything.
Yeah.
I don't know, I go.
Does it hurt to put it in a rolling thunder? It's not gonna hurt anything.
It also says due diligence, like.
Right.
Right, tiny ad.
Yeah, what's it cost, like fifty bucks?
Less than that.
Yeah, okay.
I just need to know what to put on the ad.
Well, I get a good, I'll get RFP thing and then we'll, for that, which will have just the basic of information.
If you have an interest or, or an active photographer, we are looking to.
Shutterbug, something like that.
Or something catchy, I don't know.
Weird.
Yeah.
If you are a photographer, not like, you know, if you have a nice iPhone, and you wanna come take photos, but like if you're.
You joke, but.
Right, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, it's like if you are a photographer, we are taking proposals to.
For.
Town sports program, and it'd be great too to have someone who can come do candids sometimes, like a lot of times people will, who are sports photographers, or, will have candids, and then you can buy candids, which is always fun. So that's always another option too, if people can do that.
Always lucky enough to have that, or, or Joey Sanders is doing it.
What's candy?
Like game, game shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean, and then like you buy the game.
Yeah, I remember Dover, right, basketball game, there was a woman taking a picture, she had this business card after, like, I think it was here.
I think they do it hockey too, I think Benji's always getting tagged.
Usually you don't have to pay, we, like, we would pay for anything, or that's part of, she makes money off doing that, or he or she, she in that case, makes money off doing it. So you order your photos if that's something you're money to.
We just tell one person you can do it about that.
Right, right.
But anyway, that's just, that would be a nice option.
Yeah. Alright.
So we would need to meet like, third week in August?
We have that barbecue the eighteenth.
The eighteen?
The eleventh, or the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, maybe.
Yeah.
Is it the seventeenth, there's probably two summers that have presentations for the photo.
When do we need to decide by?
We need to have a decision for our second one.
So, we, we have at least three half weeks from now, our seventeenth.
I think that's fine.
If we get it out in the next couple of days.
Yeah.
At least on social media and if.
Right.
See what others will be.
Post it, see what we get back.
So I give, I give a little bit of RFP info.
What's the RFP?
It's, it's, you have to give them some basic guidelines on what the expectations are.
Request or proposal.
I'm sorry, I guess, yeah.
The acronym, yeah, sorry.
That, those, that's my question.
Yes.
What are the expectations?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what that document will have it, and I'll just say do you guys study ad, things too, or just start, if that what he says. Good, love it. Next meeting, we'll shoot for the seventeenth, then we can have the presentations and then just finish up with some conversation afterwards.
What time?
Is there a max amount of presentations you wanna shoot for, or, nevermind, nevermind.
No, no, that's a good question, I think, I think we should limit it to probably no more than four.
No more than four and you got ten minutes, or fifteen minutes, or half an hour, or?
That's ten minutes.
Ten to fifteen.
What if there's ten people apply?
So, so that's part, when they send it in, they have, they need to, when they express their interest, they need, we need to specify, you need to supply X, Y, and Z. And from that, we will select four to.
Like, John and you.
Right, we'll select four to give our proposal.
Yeah.
Give a presentation on it, so put your best foot forward in the submission. Which we'd be fortunate enough to have three to four qualifying ones again.
Yeah.
Are we gonna do five thirty again?
Probably shoot for that, do you know if that's open?
That's fine.
Okay.
What date would you say?
Let's try the seventeenth to five thirty.
So that's a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Should we send that out?
Yeah.
And we stay next meeting, August seventeenth.
For the barbecue, should we have people bring chairs or?
It's a good question.
I just thought of that, like bring, bring your own chair, or like picnic style, like bring your own blanket.
Yeah.
Cause I can add that to the flyer.
Yeah, or probably, I don't know where else we'd get the tables, and if you do that, picnic tables and stuff, but.
Just.
Yeah, I don't think we have, we're gonna be down near the softball field, right?
Way up standard, yeah.
So you're gonna have a couple picnic tables, a few benches, it's gonna be kind of like the football, the last day of football, where everybody's kind of walking around, standing, eating, or sitting on a blanket and eating.
Have a beer garden.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Is that what Lindsay is envisioning? I think what we're envisioning is like, yes, like a barbecue, I, well, I don't know, I don't know, Lindsay.
Yes, that's what we talked about.
Okay, I feel like in our conversations that we had, she was, maybe it was my perception, it was going to be a little nicer than a hamburger hot dog walk around the park. But we might want to talk with her on that.
But she also said we're gonna have cornhole and kickball and.
I don't know, I just, I have no idea, but when we were talking about summer rec ideas that, a little while ago. She had mentioned it being a little bit nicer, like.
I, for, for me, I don't wanna spend a few thousand dollars on this thing, yeah.
So I guess that's like.
And I think something is, she's not, she doesn't have a problem spending a few thousand dollars if it's to thank the donors and the volunteers, which I see, cause we did bring in a lot of money from our fundraising.
But.
But I don't know that it included.
Twenty, twenty-four, we brought in twenty-four grand, we go spend two, twenty-five hundred on thanking people. That's our soccer rules, that we could've just paid for, you know?
But if you don't thank people, they're not gonna be in the future, I think is also her point too, so.
Right, getting tables and chairs and, I mean, that's cheap, that's free, right, and it's worth, but.
Stakes and, and rice and.
Like, it's just worth talking about.
I didn't talk to her, yeah, like, you know.
Like, yeah, the vision of the event matters, right, we're playing kickball, we don't need tables and chairs.
No, I think that was more of a fun, like barbecue, pay, thank you.
It's the person who volunteered, not their spouse.
The person who volunteered and their family.
Yeah.
Right, cause this, this, that's the day, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a lot of people. I don't think you're gonna have many donors show up.
Right.
I think you have volunteers and their families show up for a fundraiser, maybe that, the list we come up with is.
Just for baseball.
Like forty people deep.
Yeah, just for baseball and softball was a party, so.
Yeah, so you, if you do that, times four for the families, you're gonna have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty people. I think you get tons of passes on that thing.
Yeah, well, that would be good.
Alright, dudes.
Thank you.
And if you could, well, yeah.
Bring the schedule list. I'll ask him for the, the thirteen point items.
Do you close the loop with Lindsay, is that, we, that's part of that plan, is we gonna go there?
I'm watching. No, yeah, I don't want to get sacked. Sheer.
Yeah, she came back from Boston, she didn't make it, I'm going to get her.
We're coming, please, any other reason?
Can we, yeah.
Probably finally adjusted the time change.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, we.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make it, can't late too, so you're going to be on the air.
Who?
Can't late.
Gordon? Sleepover?
Thursday night?
At our house? I told her, no, no sleepovers.
I'll be gone.
It works, it's all in the rules. My wife is the worst at this.
You can send over to my house, but she's not gonna work tomorrow.
Your story is scarred us, so when Ringo sleeps over, Luke sleeps somewhere else.